Thank you very much. I would like to open the April 4th meeting, 2019, of the Barnstable Town Council. We're very thrilled to have a number of honorable guests with us tonight. I would ask that we have a roll call, please.
Counselors, Beeden Bender. Crocker.
Here.
Callum. Dagwan.
Here.
Flores. Rap Grissette.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Leveque.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. An announcement in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, make your presence known to me at this time. Thank you, I record none. I'd ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Tonight, we have honored to have in our presence quite an alignment of professionals who are here to serve our constituents in our town, and we're very grateful for that service. I would ask that Counselor Mac Leveque join me out front, and I'd ask all my councilors, too, to please come inside and lie on the inside of the podium with us, please. Many of us give of our time and our energies to our communities. Matt Leveque is a Director of the Blue Coats. Blue Coats don't really get much exposure, but I think that's by choice. They like to fly under the radar. So I would ask Matt to speak briefly to the Blue Coats, and then ask Chief Sonnenbend to come in and start our process.
Thank you, President Crocker. Thank you for everyone who's present here this evening. It's really an honor to stand here before you. I am a Director of the Barnstable Blue Coats, and the Barnstable Blue Coats is an organization that is in existence to financially support a Barnstable police officer who is either fallen in the call of duty or incapacitated performing their duties. And also, the Barnstable Blue Coats also provide funding to the Barnstable Police Department for purchases of equipment, training, and other such items that are necessary and sometimes not otherwise funded within the department's annual budget. So we just try to lend a helping hand in communication with the chief to try to provide for the Barnstable Police Department, which obviously we so appreciate. It is a group that is dedicated to supporting the Barnstable Police Department. Without any further ado, I'd like to welcome up our Chief, Chief Matthew Sonnenbend.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. President Crocker, members of the council, thank you for taking the opportunity and the time to recognize people who, of themselves, would not come forward to seek any recognition for the things that they do on a daily basis. And we are truly appreciative and humbled to be here and receive these tokens of your appreciation and the appreciation of the town of Barnstable. Without further ado, I would like to call up here to stand with me Lieutenant Michael Clark, Officer Joseph Carnes, Officer Michael Lima, Officer Christopher Van Ness, Sergeant Michael Turgeon, and representing Officer Sean Geary of the Yarmouth Police Department and his parents. The reason why we stand here before you today is not an easy thing to recall or remember, but it is something that none of us who were working last April will ever forget. And I do think it is fitting that these gentlemen who stand up here behind me do receive some recognition for their roles that day and for what they did. On April 12th, 2018, Lieutenant Michael Clark, Officer Joseph Carnes, and Officer Michael Lima responded to 109 Blueberry Lane in Marston's Mills to assist members of the Yarmouth Police Proactive Anti-Crime Unit and the Massachusetts State Police Violent Fugitive Squad in serving an arrest warrant for Thomas Latanowich. During the execution of that warrant, the officer's attention was drawn to an attic area accessed through a hatch located in the ceiling of a bedroom within the home as being a possible hiding spot for the wanted subject. A K-9 unit was requested, and Sergeant Sean Gannon of the Yarmouth Police Department responded with his partner, K-9 Nero. As Sergeant Gannon, K-9 Nero, Officer Christopher Van Ness of the Yarmouth Police Department, Officer Sean Geary of the Yarmouth Police Department, and Sergeant Michael Turgeon of the Massachusetts State Police conducted a search of the attic area, a shot was heard, and Sergeant Gannon fell mortally wounded. Immediately, Officer Van Ness, Officer Geary, and Sergeant Turgeon reacted to remove Sergeant Gannon from the attic and backed through the small access hatch into the lower level of the home. Lieutenant Clark, Officer Carnes, and Officer Lima provided cover for their fellow officers in initial first aid to Sergeant Gannon as the team moved swiftly to extricate him from the home to an area where EMS personnel from the comm fire department could continue treatment. Despite the horrific and traumatic scene, these officers continued to act selflessly and operate as a cohesive unit to request additional resources, establish a perimeter around the home, and to prevent the escape of a dangerous and violent fugitive. Ultimately, due in no small part to their personal bravery and swift actions that afternoon, the suspect surrendered and was taken into custody without further loss of life or injury. The actions taken by Lieutenant Michael Clark, Officer Joseph Carnes, Officer Michael Lima, Officer Christopher Van Ness, Officer Sean Geary, and Trooper Michael Turgeon on the afternoon of April 12th, 2018 bring great credit upon themselves, their respective agencies in the law enforcement profession. In recognition of their selfless service to the citizens of the town of Barnstable, the Barnstable Police Department, and their fellow officers, I hereby award Lieutenant Michael Clark, Officer Joseph Carnes, Officer Michael Lima, Officer Christopher Van Ness, Officer Sean Geary, and Trooper Michael Turgeon each with the Barnstable Police Department Medal of Valor. Gentlemen, thank you for your service. Thank you. As each one of these officers would tell you, they were not there alone that day, nor were they alone in the days that followed up until today. This has not been a solitary effort of any one single person. This has not been a solitary effort exhibited by any one single agency here on Cape Cod. It was a group effort with a lot of people involved. And there were a lot of people involved from the Barnstable Police Department that really, you know, just, we did not go recognize that day and just kind of did what they had to do each and every day, there and thereafter, to get their job done. And I wanted to take a moment to recognize them as well. On April 12th, 2018, members of the Barnstable Police Department were requested to assist the Yarmouth Police Department and the Massachusetts State Police in serving an arrest warrant for Thomas Latanowich at 109 Blueberry Lane in Marston's Mills. During the service of that warrant, a radio call went out announcing that shots had been fired and an officer was down. The moment that radio call went out, everything else ceased to exist. Officers who were at the scene leapt into action to aid Sergeant Gannon in containing the suspect. Officers who were working in other areas of town immediately converged on the scene to assist. Officers who were off-duty left their homes and families and came to the station, ready to go to work. Dispatch handled calls from frantic family members who had heard the transmission while trying to coordinate additional resources to offer multiple agencies to the scene. Without question or hesitation, you, the men and women of the Barnstable Police Department, responded. In the days that followed, you continued to respond. Members of the peer support team coordinated debriefings. Officers volunteered to work shifts and help provide patrol coverage so that others could attend services in grief. And detectives assisted with searches and to help complete the investigation. You also spoke to your families and quieted their fears as you kept coming to work each day and serving your community with unwavering pride and dedication. The way you responded to one of the most difficult situations any police officer could face speaks volumes of your character and professionalism. You put others before yourselves and were there when your fellow officers and the citizens of Barnstable needed you the most. You are truly a credit to the law enforcement profession and to the town of Barnstable. It is an honor to work with you, to each of you. In recognition of your selfless service and dedication, I hereby award each member of the Barnstable Police Department on active duty during the events of April 12th, 2018, with this letter of commendation. Thank you for your service. And now I'd like to call Representative Crocker up to the podium, please.
Thank you, Chief, and good evening. I have proclamations from both the Massachusetts House and the Massachusetts Senate for these officers for the performance of their duties on the day of April 12th. I will read them once, but they are for all of the officers involved. From the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, House of Representatives, be it hereby known that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to the officers in recognition of your valiant efforts to aid a fellow officer on April 12th, 2018, in the village of Marston's Mills. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Signed this fourth day of April at the State House in Boston by Speaker DeLeo, myself, and the membership of the Cape and Islands delegation, State Representative Randy Hunt, State Senator Julian Seer, State Representative Timothy Whalen. Congratulations, officers. From the Massachusetts State Senate, and I offer the apologies from State Senator Seer, who was not able to be here tonight because the Senate did meet today, but the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate offers its official citation, be it hereby known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to the officers in recognition of your valiant efforts to aid a fellow officer on July 12th, 2018, in the village of Marston's Mills. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes and continued success that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy transmitted to the clerk of the Senate. Signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, attest to the clerk of the Senate and offered by State Senator Julian Seer, again, offering our sincere congratulations in those very difficult times. The towns of Barnstable and Yarmouth are truly in your debt, and we honor you such. Thank you.
On behalf of the town of Barnstable, Chief Sonnenbend, I would like to present this to you in our appreciation to the entire Barnstable police officer service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have one, you know, one final thing to say. That was, for any of us, that was one of the worst things we ever had to endure. And for most of the days you go to work as a police officer, you really wonder if anybody thinks about you or appreciates what you do. And I really have to say thank you to the town of Barnstable for the outpouring of support that came from the people that we serve every day, who were there, serving us in our moment of need and in our hour of darkness. You came forward and gave us nothing but unwavering support and thankfulness during that time. It meant a lot to all of us that do work here every day, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I would be completely remiss if I didn't offer Chief Frederiksen a moment to come up here and say something.
Good evening. It's been a long year, but tonight, to honor these men, the men and women of the Barnstable Police Department, Chief Sonnenbend, town councilors, it's much appreciated. The men and women of both Yarmouth Police Department are tough. They come back to work. They're doing the job. After everything that's happened, they're there for you, in a large part because of what you have done for them. You've kept their spirit going during this awful time. And I can't thank you enough from across the line in Yarmouth. And I also have to add that we don't feel like we're different departments because we'll do for one as we do for the other. And we'll do it again today, tomorrow, and the year from now. So again, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you very much. And for you men, you're unbelievable. Be very proud of this group right here. They're unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you. President Crocker.
With our deepest appreciation, we're grateful for the service and grateful for the effort you put forward every day for us on behalf. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. If you'd like to exit the building, please feel free to at this point. I also want to say a special thanks to the COMM firefighters and the chief who were here tonight as well. Thank you. Counselors, we'll take a two-minute recess and let the room have its day. Thank you. We'll reconvene at 7:30. Counselors, the break is up. May I have the councilors? Madam Clerk, would you take the roll call, please? Make sure we're ready for business.
Counselors, Crocker.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Rap Grissette.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Leveque.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley. Wallace.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. An announcement before we start public comment. 2019-117, the pickleball issue, I'm going to ask councils to allow us to take that out of order. So if anybody's here to speak to that, I'd please ask that three or four of you speak at the time we bring the issue up. With that said, we're open for public comment. Anybody have any public comments? Thank you very much. Makes it easy on the response to public comment, and we're on to the town manager's communications. Town Manager Mark Els.
Good evening, Mark Els. This is my town manager's report for the period of March 22nd through April 4th. Actually have several items that I did not write down, but felt that I should bring them to your attention. First of all, I want to thank our Structures and Grounds Department and our School Department for working together with the cattoliers to get Lowell Park ready for the Barnstable High School team to utilize that baseball field. They did an excellent job in coordinating. We have great partners there and with our School Department. I was really proud to see the condition of that field, and I think the cattoliers were, you know, said, geez, this is as good as I've seen it in years. So, thank you to the DPW for getting that ready for our high school baseball team. I know we're trying to get Lombard Field ready, too, for the girls' softball. So as soon as I think the clay dries out, maybe they'll be in there utilizing that field as well. It's nice to see all of our efforts under our field study in these various facilities we have, well utilized by our community. Second issue is, we had a hearing before the Cape Cod Commission today relevant to a modification under Chapter H which allows for us to look at the DR, when there's a development of regional impact with certain thresholds, that triggers the Cape Cod Commission review, and there's the opportunity to review those thresholds and ask for modification of those thresholds. It became apparent, being involved in the process and working with our Director of Planning, Elizabeth Jenkins, that we were actually the first community to come forward with such a request. There had been a couple done, I believe, in Sandwich and Bourne, but those were initiated by the Cape Cod Commission staff. So we worked, or Elizabeth Jenkins, worked very closely with the Commission staff. We had a subcommittee meeting last week where it was unanimously recommended that it proceed to full committee of the Cape Cod Commission for modification of what we were proposing. And what we were proposing is to look at these thresholds in our industrial park area and in commercial areas that basically fall around Route 132, Berse's Way, and Route 28 area. And so, and there's actually in your handout tonight, there is a map of the areas, and there are also a description of the proposed change in thresholds. In the commercial areas, it was to go from a 10,000-square-foot proposal to a 20,000-square-foot proposal. And in the industrial areas, for certain types of uses, there was a 10,000-square-foot to 40,000-square-foot proposal. And that was heard by the entire Cape Cod Commission this afternoon. Elizabeth, I testified, Elizabeth Jenkins did an excellent presentation and addressed any and all questions that were brought forward by the Commission. I want to thank our town council leadership and town counselors and the subcommittee for supporting this. Our planning board reviewed it and supported it. It went before the subcommittee and now the full commission. The full commission supported it today, so it passed. So I want to thank Elizabeth Jenkins for a great job. I want to thank the Commission staff for its review, its thoughtful review. I met with Christie Senatori, Patty Daly, and John Ideman. Elizabeth worked with the staff. Fred Charagotis, our representative on the Cape Cod Commission, testified and supported this and asked for his fellow members' support. So again, it was approved. What happens now, it actually, within the next 14 days, goes to the Assembly of Delegates. There's no vote required. Once it's submitted to the Assembly of Delegates within 14 days, then there is 14 days till approval, but there's no action required by the Assembly of Delegates. So, I wanted to share that with you. I know that it was something that was brought forward, certainly in our discussions with the council, and we were successful in receiving that approval today. We are proceeding with the tasks in the budget action plan for FY 2020. I've given you another schedule, just so you can review. We're beginning our capital improvement projects tonight, and then we will move subsequently in the first meeting and meetings in June as needed for our operating budget. So you will see that reflected in the schedule. We continue our discussions with Fish and Wildlife regarding the future potential to site water supply wells on the 250-acre parcel owned by the Commonwealth that directly abuts the Hyannis Public Water Supply. Town continues work with Mass Fish and Wildlife to finalize an agreement that would enable the town to install public water supply wells on the 250-acre Hyannis Ponds Wildlife Management Area. We met with Fish and Wildlife on March 28th. The discussion focused on the alternatives analysis that the town of Barnstable is conducting relevant to installing test wells on the 250 acres. And the discussion progressed, and we received an affirmative response from Fish and Wildlife staff. Subject to the Fish and Wildlife Commissioner's approval, that the town can proceed with the installation and sampling on this site. So we were hopeful that we would have this by the end of April, and we were able to, at least, subject to the Commissioner's approval, receive an affirmative response there. There are, there is a bigger effort that Fish and Wildlife will be looking for us to explain to them, and it is, when we compare this site to other sites in the alternatives analysis that we're doing, is this the best site? Now, we don't know that until we go in and we sample, and we have to do pump tests. This isn't just water sampling. This is actually going to the next step of evaluation. But, given that two years and three months ago, the answer was, no, you can't do this, we've progressed. So I'm pleased to report that, and I will let you know as soon as we have final confirmation from the Commissioner. I expect that the work from our analysis, from our alternatives analysis, at all the different sites, I gave you last meeting, the agreement we have with the county to test the county farm site. We also have other municipal sites, about six in total, I believe, that we'll be looking at. We hope to be running them in this calendar year. That's our intent. So hopefully, we'll be able to report out on how we're going to proceed at that point. We have continued our efforts at the West Barnstable Shooting Range and anticipate a response on the Notice of Project Change filed by the town to address the additional exchange of acreage requested by the state to offset the 27-acre area identified as the West Barnstable Shooting Range and the surrounding shotfall area. If you remember, originally, we had a smaller area identified, and then believed it was best that, given the historic shotfall area, we expand that area that was identified as the range. The physical range is about two and a half acres. The rest of the area is historically, over the last 50 years, where the shot, primarily shotgun shot, has fallen. And so, once we had refined that area, we had expanded that acreage. From, originally, it was about 16 acres, we expanded it to 27. So what we needed to do was file a Notice of Project Change under the MIPA determination that had been previously filed to reflect that additional land. And in return, the state was looking for us not to just provide 16 acres, which was, 17 acres, which was originally the Breeds Hill Parcel, but now to add another 10 acres. And we had identified a 10-acre parcel that immediately abuts conservation land off of Nye Road, and had discussions with the state. It was deemed acceptable, and so the combination of those two parcels, the Breeds Hill and the Nye Neck Road, allowed us to replicate the 27 acres that would be looked to take out of conservation and become what is identified as the Barnstable Shooting Range area. So, we are progressing with that. We expect, we expect the state to issue their decision relevant to Notice of Project Change shortly. Upon issuance of this certificate of acceptance of the Notice of Project Change by MIPA, the next steps include signing a memorandum of understanding between the town and the state that removes the conditions of the self-help grants, self-help grants, on the West Barnstable Shooting Range, and then submission of a petition to the General Court of the Commonwealth that was approved, these processes were approved by the town council in the orders that I reference in my memo to you, to enact special legislation approving the change in care, custody, and management control of the three parcels that I've just described. Now, once we've proceeded through that process, through a certification being issued, an agreement of a memorandum of understanding, which we've had a draft of now through this whole process, and the state legislature, both House and Senate approving this, then we'll proceed. The town council also approved $350,000 in FY 2017 to commence site cleanup, reconfiguration, and safety improvements. We're ready to do that. We have been ready to do that, and we've been awaiting these processes to be complete. Once the range reaches the point of receiving its approvals and completing the cleanup of the, and this is focused right now on the two-and-a-half-acre parcel, the, it is my decision as town manager to assign this shooting range to the Barnstable Police Department. Initially, use of the facility will be limited to the police department. Range use will be limited in hours from sunup to sundown Monday through Saturday. The Barnstable Police Department has been assigned the responsibility to develop a program for public use of the shooting range and to bring forward said program to the town manager for review and approval as appropriate. The range will be operated by the BPD in strict compliance with all gun safety regulations and best practices. I'll keep you advised of this process. This process can still take a while, and we do not know from each of the steps I've described what the conclusion might be, but we will continue to proceed through this process, and I'll keep you advised as we progress. The town of Barnstable received an FY 2019 earmark from the state of Massachusetts for $45,000 for emergency winter sheltering. We worked with our surrounding communities and the Duffy Health Center and sheltered 30 individuals for a total of 244 nights at facilities in Barnstable, Yarmouth, and Falmouth, and that was through April 1st, 2019. We anticipate the use of the entire earmark. I don't have all the final numbers in for costs. To date, it looked like there was a balance of about 10,000 left, but we don't have all the costs, total costs, in at this point. So I'm expecting it'll be depleted. I have reached out to Senator Seer to have further discussions about how effective the use of this money was, the regional application of this money, and the potential for receiving another earmark in the future. And so, I want to thank all involved. Our police department did an excellent job in coordinating this. I can't thank them enough for their efforts. Finally, Jack Units called me today, and it was relative to a meeting that he had scheduled on Monday. There has been a request for a public involvement plan site designation at the Cape Cod Fire Train, or Barnstable County, I'm sorry, Fire Training Academy, and there was apparently a meeting scheduled on Monday that has been canceled, and it's last-minute notice in their minds. So they've sent out letters to all those. I know they're reaching out to the local media, and they reached out to me and asked, knowing that we do these communications, asked that I state something during my town manager communications. What they are planning to do is to reschedule to May 2nd at 6:00 PM in Hyannis at a place to be determined. So that gives us a little time, and I will speak with Jack Units, and I will bring back to you when that future date might be. All of the information that was to be presented, we're aware of, and he shares with us, but this was another step to allow our public to know exactly what's going on at that location and that facility. That concludes town manager's communication, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Counselor questions? I would ask to make sure that Jack Units knows Thursday night's night, because there's a number of councils who are very interested in that discussion as well.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Counselors, any questions, please? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mark. I have a question that wasn't part of your report, but I think it's the season for potholes and road repair. And with our new website, could you confirm that if people have a site identified, they can use the report, report a problem?
Absolutely. On the town website, on DPW, they can call during normal business hours, 508-790-6330, and report it, you know, the old-fashioned way. And so, yes. And we absolutely need people to let us know when they see them, because it is the season for potholes. And, you know, we're not in every single, I mean, we have 1,800 roads in the town of Barnstable. So it's always helpful to hear from a neighborhood, perhaps, that we haven't traveled through.
And the emergency repairs apply to both public and private roads?
It depends on the extent of the emergency, but, but yes. We will go out there and check any complaint, and then make a determination as to the appropriate level of response.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rapgrasseti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask through you, the town manager, at our next meeting, to just brief us on where we are with the armory. I know there was, you know, in the news about the Oceanside Performing Arts Center going there, and, you know, that armory's laid vacant for many, many years. So I'd like to know where the town stands on that and what our plans are for the facility. So if we could have an update at our next meeting, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors to my right? Counselors to my left? Yes.
Just a comment about the shooting range. This has been a long time, you've been working on this, and it's nice to see that, you know, the steps that you outlined years ago are moving forward. Remember, this was a priority at every one of our meetings, probably two years ago. It's always filled with people concerned about the fire, the shooting range. And so, to get this update and know that we're actually accomplishing what we said we would do is a good thing. So I just want to congratulate you on that and all those that have been involved with trying to move the process forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors? Yes, Counselor Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. President. With respect to the timeframe to get all the MOU with MIPA put together and the other things, do you have a timeframe you're looking at before we would probably have all these things completed and all those ducks in a row?
I don't, because they don't fall within my control. I could guess months, I would say, but you may have asked me four years ago when we embarked on this, how long it would be, and I may have said- And I may have said months then, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other counselors? My own personal thanks to yourself and Director of Planning and Growth, Elizabeth. She certainly helped us in the committee, got us off the ground, and then got us organized to make the proper filing. I do believe, as I often do about things that occur in town, although it doesn't happen with good management. So, thank you very much for your management and stewardship on that issue.
You're welcome.
Hearing no further questions from my counselors, I would ask Counselor Stein-Halber to read the public minutes meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the town council meeting minutes of March 21st, 2019, as drafted.
Second.
I got a first and a second. Anyone want to discuss them? Hearing none, I'd move the minutes of town council meeting, March 21st, 2019, as drafted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Thank you. Record that as unanimous, please. Communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commissions, reports, correspondence, and announcements. Counselors, yes, Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to make comment that I did attend, as a Vietnam veteran, the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans, giving a welcome back to our Vietnam veterans who were not well received back after war, after losing 57,000 of our brothers and sisters in that, that conflict. And it was beautifully done. And it was hosted at the Barnstable Adult Center. It was very beautifully done. And the pastries and the food and the beverage was supplied by the students of our Cape Cod Tech. We can be very, very proud of what the, the good work that our tech is doing. The students are absolutely awesome. The Skills USA, which is part of their, going out into the public and doing good things within the community. They were there. They greeted every single veteran that came into that building, of which there had to be somewhere's north of 100 veterans were there. And the young people greeted every single veteran that came into that building. And so, I don't know what was more moving for me, to be with so many brothers and sisters in the military. And I even made comment at one point, wouldn't it be great if, if our country could be respecting one another as much as the respect that I saw for the veterans, for each other, and recognizing that we are one country and we're all working together to make it the best country. But the young people were so responsive. I, I went to thank one of the veterans who sang a song from his wheelchair and had his harmonica. And then I went to thank him. And he was surrounded by students that were all crying. It was a terrific, terrific event. And I was thrilled with our town and how we helped to make this happen. And veterans came from all over Cape Cod for that. Really beautiful. Thank you.
Counselor Hebert, let me thank you also for your attention to the emergency winter sheltering. Certainly a task well, well done, keeping us on point there. Thank you. Any other counselors? Communications? Counselor Snap?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items tonight. And one is to announce the Habitat for Humanity Home Dedication Celebration and Open House on Tuesday, April 9th at 4:00. We're going to have four new homes on a new street, Dickinson Drive in Marston's Mills. And this has really been a labor of love for so many volunteers who've come out to help build these four homes. The town has made a significant investment in this project. We had both CDBG funds and CPC funds that helped make this possible. And so, I hope anybody who is in that neighborhood on Tuesday drops by. It, it's an extremely heartwarming event to go to a dedication for four new Habitat homes. 4:00 on Tuesday, April 9th.
Go ahead, Counselor Snap.
So, the second item, totally different topic, is you've just been handed the, our Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee's Capital Improvements Plan Report. And I'm sure some of you have already received it and read it thoroughly. But as a liaison to the committee, I did want to point out, I think, a really important recommendation that the committee made. And that's to include evaluation criteria in future capital planning, the process. We have really come to have a very refined process in, in choosing and selecting the capital projects each year. And I don't know if we'll have an opportunity to speak to that, but it really is an amazing process that, that our staff goes through. But one of the areas that the committee thought would be an enhancement would be add some evaluation criteria. So, as you know, we, we go through this whole process. And tonight, we're going to be listening to a lot of good information. But sometimes, we don't know exactly how our money has been put to work a couple of years hence. And so, I think this is something we should consider and maybe bring forth for the town to include in its process next year.
Thank you, Counselor Snap. That word travels fast out of that committee. We've already had a leadership meeting on it. The manager is very interested in bringing that forward, as well as the Director of Finance, Mark Mill. So, I think you'll see those incorporations. Counselor Wallace?
Thank you. The West Barnstable is holding their annual spaghetti supper. And it's April 6th at 5:00 PM at the Firehouse on Route 149. Now, this event is the fundraiser that raises the funds so that we can put together our Village Day festivities in August. This is a good dinner. It's $10 or less, depending on who you are and what you want to eat. But it's real fun and it's good fun for the whole family. And we're looking forward to seeing everybody there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wallace. Counselors, Counselor Lovett?
I'm pleased to announce a Easter egg hunt doubleheader. On April 13th, the Marston's Mills Village Association Annual Easter Egg Hunt is taking place at Burgess Park from, on Saturday morning, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And then you can get, take a little breather, get the kids back in the car, and you can travel down 28 heading towards Hyannis. And bang a right on Osterville West Barnstable Road into, to, towards Cape Cod Academy. And there, there's going to be the Easter Explosion, it's called. And that's going to be again at Cape Cod Academy, starting at 12:00 PM. There'll be bounce houses, face painting, and an Easter egg hun, Easter egg launching contraption that's going to shoot eggs into the air, from what I'm told. And anyway, fun for the whole family. And, and that is actually sponsored by Faith Baptist Church in Osterville. And you can register for that event at capefaith.org. And then, that evening, after the kids are all hopped up on sugar, you can get them a babysitter. And you can head down to the Hyannis Golf Course, where there's going to be a comedy show and heavy appetizers that's supporting a baseball team that I bring to Cooperstown, New York. This is my sixth year involved with that. And I bring a 12-year-old, a team of 12-year-olds from Barnstable to Cooperstown, New York to compete in the Cooperstown Dream Spark Tournament. It's a, a tournament that includes 104 teams from all over the country and Canada. And we compete. And we have a great time. We live in barracks for the week. And it is a, a great experience. It's really like the Disneyland of baseball. But the, the trip cost in excess of over $20,000 to bring the team there. So, we're doing a little fundraiser, again, comedy show, heavy appetizers. And the price of admission is $30. And silent auction, live auction, and all that fun stuff. Again, that's to the Cape Cod Super Sluggers. And that's Saturday night, Hyannis Golf Course, 6:00 PM. Hope to see you there. Thanks so much for your time.
Counselors? Hearing no further counselors, I will move to the orders of the day. I will ask this council's permission to take one order out of order. It would be 2019-117, the appropriation loan order in the amount of $620,000 for the purpose of funding the Marston's Mills Tennis Court Improvement Project as outlined in fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024, Capital Improvement Plan. This will be a public hearing. Am I, do I have my council's permission? I got a second. All those in favor of taking this out of order? Ayes. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're fortunate enough to have the Director of Public Works, Dan Santos, with us. And we're queued up for this particular event, so.
Good evening, Mr. President, and members of the town council. The tennis court surface and net support systems located at the West Villages School in Marston's Mills have completely failed with large cracks, upheavals, and surface spalling. Repairs to the surface were attempted last year as a means to stave off reconstruction, but they too failed within six months of their application. These courts will continue to be available for general public use once repaired and rebuilt. This project will rebuild the six failed tennis courts with four new tennis courts that will include pickleball lines plus six dedicated pickleball courts, which were recommended in the town's 2018 recreational field study. Improvements will include new nets and posts, surfings, surfacing, coatings, and repair of fencing. The new courts will be constructed with post-tension concrete, which has a much longer life expectancy than asphalt. Thank you.
To make this proper, I would ask that I get a motion to open 2019-117 to the public hearing. I have a first and a second. Please record the first second. All those in favor of having the public hearing? Any opposition? Any abstentions? We've had our rationale. I would ask any of the public to come forward and speak to the issue. We're in the public meeting. You're welcome to come forward to the mic. You must sign in, please, and let us know your name, although I know yours. Oh, yeah. Thank you for coming out.
No problem.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the town council, I just wanted to first introduce the members of the Barnstable Pickleball Group. The men and women of the Barnstable Pickleball Group have come out tonight to ask your support for this project, just explained by Mr. Santos here in the DPW. Pickleball is a game that is...
Could I ask, I'm sorry. Could I ask you to repeat your name and your home village, please?
I'm sorry, yeah. Yep, my, my name is Aaron Webb. I live in the Village of Centerville. Sorry. So, pickleball is just a game that is growing exponentially every year. And each town, I think, on the Cape is wrestling with, you know, how best to support the members of each town's pickleball group. And we have an opportunity here in Marston's Mills with courts that were originally, six tennis courts that when pickleball first came to Barnstable, were laid out for pickleball initially and have since now deteriorated to the point of we need to reconstruct those. So, I know the CIP plan calls for the resurfacing of the tennis courts to include four tennis courts and six dedicated pickleball courts. And us, as a group, are hoping that we can work with the town to, you know, work on the design of those courts and make sure that we include enough space to accommodate our group and our growth, as our group continues to grow monthly. Right now, we have about 300 members, many of which are active in multiple towns, but many of which do come to Barnstable to want to play. And, and currently, we play at Bay Lane Tennis Courts in Centerville on two converted tennis courts that convert over to six pickleball courts. And unfortunately, we're sort of maxed out at that point. We've already outgrown those six converted pickleball courts. So, we're slightly concerned that the six dedicated pickleball courts won't quite be enough. So, in working with the town and maybe in the design, we can go forward with trying to better accommodate our group, whether we convert maybe four of those tennis courts to tennis and add six more pickleball courts to give us a grand total of 12, would most likely be ideal for the size of our group and the numbers of how we're growing. The town of Dennis is putting in 12 dedicated pickleball courts as we speak. And Yarmouth is beginning construction on 10. Mashpee's put in eight. And so, we feel like, you know, being the biggest town on the Cape, that we should at least follow suit, given the growth of the game, to most likely accommodate a much larger group. And 12 courts would be ideal. So, our continued working with Recreation Department, Patty and John Gleason, of course, and the town of DPW, to see if we can't at least make that happen. So, that's, that's all I got. Any questions? Any, any, any feedback or any sort of confusion that might be out there?
We may have some discussion between ourselves. This is the public portion, so we ask anybody who'd like to come forward to speak at this time.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Aaron. Again, please sign in and state your name for the record.
I'm Tom Gilouli. I live in Centerville. And I'm here also to, to support the appropriation of $620,000 for pickleball courts and mixed-use tennis pickleball courts as well. I'm on the committee. I take care of the database for the committee. And since August of last year, we have over 325 people that have registered to play pickleball in Barnstable. Over 125 of those people live in one of the seven villages in Barnstable. We do support the local economy as well. We play indoors at the youth center, the HYCC Center. And our winter time, we have contributed over $11,000 to the center, playing Monday mornings and Wednesday mornings. They charge us $4 a session. We have two sessions on Monday and two sessions on Wednesday. And we're also a very social group. We have a great time. We're, we're best of friends. We all play and we all have a good time together. And yet, when we're on the courts against each other, we take no prisoners. And we love to beat each other. But it's a fun game and it's a growing sport. As Aaron said, we're growing by over 11% in the United States since 19, since 2015. And there's over three and a half million people play. Cape Cod is bursting with new pickleball players. Our surrounding towns, as Aaron had said, all have been proactive and have now either have made or in the course, are being made new dedicated pickleball courts. And we hope that you'll support this allocation as well. It's also even being now taught in the middle schools in most Cape Cod schools, particularly Barnstable, as a, in physical education, they have a, a unit, a six-week unit where they teach pickleball to their kids. So, it's not just for seniors, but it is for everyone to play. It's an easy game to play. It's a fun game to play. It has great health benefits, especially for the seniors. It's a, it's, it's low, low impact, low risk injury. A lot of tennis players that have gotten a little older now play pickleball because it's easier on the joints. It's a, it's a much smaller courts, about half the size. And I hope that everybody, all of you on the committee will support this. This is something that we've played for the last 10 years here in Barnstable on tennis courts. And we've had to mix lines with the tennis people. And it's, it's, the lines can be confusing. It's just as confusing for the tennis players as it is for the pickleball players. And it really would be nice to have dedicated courts. We used to play at the Marston's Mill Courts three years ago. And as you've heard, they're in disrepair now. So, we've moved to the Centerville Courts on Bay Lane. And they're getting cracks now as well. And in a couple of years, that, I think that, those courts will have to be addressed as well. And we paint the lines on the tennis courts. And we find that there are less and less tennis people playing and more and more pickleball people playing. And that may be a result of the aging population of Cape Cod as well. Over half the voting members now are 55 years and older. And it's a great sport. It's great fun. And it's something that I hope the town of Barnstable will get on board and support. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Please sign in. State your name and your...
Hi, my name's Kerry McNamara from Centerville. And I'm also a pickleball player. One point I wanted to make that we, when we play at Bay Lane or the rec center, we set up temporary nets, take them down, and then nobody can play after. They're locked up. The growth of the sport is not going to happen until we get dedicated courts. If you do not, if you work the first shift or you go to school, you cannot play pickleball because it's only in the mornings. If we have courts that are dedicated, you can play sunup to sundown. And it'll open up to anybody that wants to play. up to anybody that wants to play. And I think that's one of the biggest things.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please state your name and your village, please, after you sign in.
My name is Bob Powers. I don't live in Centerville. I live in Hyannis. Moved here three years ago, but year-round, but my family has been part of Barnstable since my mother grew up here and watched Main Street get paved. Just a few things else to mention. One is, if you look at the group here, it's about 50/50, men and women, and there aren't too many sports like that. There are a lot of mixed doubles that are played, and so the sport appeals to everybody. The other thing is, unlike a lot of other sports, it's a very social sport. I moved here, and most of the people I played pickleball with, I didn't know before I started playing pickleball. I had the occasion to be out in Ohio this summer, unfortunately for family health reasons, but out there, it was a great way to get introduced to the community. And I found myself playing pickleball with groups in three different towns in the immediate area. So, unlike other sports where you might have two courts in Katuut and two in Marston's Mills and two in Hyannis, there really is a need for a concentration of dedicated pickleball courts so that groups can play as a group, with potluck suppers and coffee hours and all the other things that go along with it. In addition, as Kerry mentioned, there is a need for pickleball other than those group dedicated times. And right now, there is no place in Barnstable to play pickleball other than during our group sessions, and that is really a mistake. I summered in West Dennis. As Aaron mentioned, they're building 14 courts there. Yarmouth has already built 10 courts. Massey has already built eight courts, all in one locations in each of those communities. And so, we really do need something like this for the entire community and certainly for the older baby boomers and older that need social and recreational and athletic opportunities, not just the kids that go to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. Thank you. Thank you for your participation. Councilors, we have, I will make an exception and allow us to speak to anybody who came before us tonight. This is an unusual situation for us, as usual. So, if there are any councilor questions, please feel free to ask them. Councilors? Yes, Councilor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I think it's my understanding, one, that the senior centers is starting to talk, our adult center is starting to talk about some potential pickleball courts, and so I think it'd be terrific. It's very, you can speak to that? Yes, sure.
There's a lot of discussion about pickleball throughout the field study, which hasn't been presented yet, so that's part of some of the confusion. One of the things at this site and over the years that we've found is, part of your strategic plan is the quality of life. This is definitely quality of life. This definitely meets what you were looking to have happen, and that's why it rose to the occasion. There will probably be more pickleball, but the opportunity to build a space that has the ability to not just do our program, it also will be able to expand, to bring in tournaments, to bring in money, to really expand Capewide by having the number of courts. So, we are working with the pickleball people as far as what we're going to plan on doing, making all the courts able to do pickleball if we need to do a tournament, which is what they really want. And then, when we expand in other places, it probably won't have that vast size like we have at this facility already ready for us. So, it's a win-win.
Thank you very much. And that is Patty Machado, Director of Rec and Leisure Services. Yes, would you like a follow-up?
Patty, could you tell us right now how many courts are available that can convert to pickleball?
We have, currently, we have six courts that are set up, with Centerville being the portables. They bring the portables in. There is a difference in using our tennis courts in comparison to the pickleball courts. The lines, the nets are lower, and one of the things, I went to a conference, and pickleball was all the rage across the country, and they discussed how doing what we've done is nice, and it gives opportunity so that people can go and practice or take lessons, but it really isn't conducive to what they need because there's more running. If you look at the courts, there's a lot more running that has to happen in order to get the ball. So, when the ball goes behind you, you're running for it, so it adds more stress to them. So, this setup would actually alleviate that problem and give them the opportunity and also give them the socialization that they're looking for.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Thank you.
Councilor Hebert?
I just am kind of new to this. So, in the conversion of the courts that we're making as tennis, would that be a one-for-one?
There'll be a couple of courts that will be set up so that they can play tennis. The other courts will be set up strictly for pickleball, so people can go and set up for pickleball as a group if they wanted to. And then tennis could still, it would still give them the same number of tennis courts that they have in all the other villages. So, we're not, we're still giving Marston's Mills their tennis courts, but they'll have the pickleball lines a little bit different so that they can make more pickleball courts on those portably. Does that make sense?
Questions? Councilor Hebert?
Thank you very much. So, you mentioned, which I was hoping you would, this is very exciting, and there's no question about it, that it's part of our future in terms of, if we want to see a lot of competitions take place, if we're not set up, then that competition is going to go to Yarmouth, and it's going to go to other towns. I'm not, I think they're going to help attract. The more there is, the more we're going to have a chance for people to come here. And I just think it's a terrific thing, and I have to share, I don't want to embarrass you, Aaron, but I saw Aaron, and I said, "What have you been doing?" I mean, he looked 10 years younger, and he was excited, and he was... And then, to see his wife and his children here supporting him, I think is just absolutely awesome. And so, both my wife and I said, "What's Aaron into it?" And I said, "You won't believe this, but it's pickleball." So, thank you very, very much. Good job.
We'll see you next Monday at the Hyannis Youth Community Center. Come give it a try!
That may very well happen, yes.
You know, and also, we have, Bill Datto used to be in charge, and we've now collaborate with him. He got certified. So, he's actually, a lot of people are like, "Oh, I don't know if I want to come to that big group because I don't know how to play." So, now we have him teaching pickleball. So, it's just going to continue to grow because he's filling his classes up, so there's more to come.
Awesome.
Well, don't let the bowtie fool you. He's known as Nifty around the net, so... Don't jump right into the first game he comes out of. Any down the end, please? Councilor Dagwan?
Yes, you answered the question I was going to ask about, how do people learn? Are we giving lessons? I learned from one of the ladies that I see here at the youth center that came one morning, and again, was a little, you know, hesitant, but people were very friendly and offered to let me use, you know, their paddle, and taught me how to play the game. And so, that it's expanding, I just, you know, was wondering, is there someplace for people to take a lesson so they, you know, they feel a little bit more comfortable than I did coming out there? But it is a, it is a fun group. I find that, you know, it's a low-impact kind of activity. It improves not only cardiovascular improvement and development, it also improves, I found, cognitive development as well. It's a very quick-thinking game. You have to think on your feet when you're out there. And I think it would generate, you know, some tournaments because there are more and more people who are showing interest in it. And it is a social. I found, you know, like the other gentleman said, I met some friends that I probably would never have met through pickleball, so I'm in support of this.
Thank you. Councilor Beedenbender?
Thank you, President Crocker. I am so glad I made it back in time for this. When, I remember when I was campaigning, it was actually one of the top issues with my constituents in Precinct Four. Had a lot of conversations about this. In the last week, I've had dozens of contacts from constituents, and, you know, we're a diverse community. You know, we talk about our rec fields, and we're going to be putting a million into the school potentially, into the high school, and we're looking at other expenditures on recreational fields, and it tends, you know, primarily it's for youth. Well, you know, 70 is the new 50. So, you know, we have to think of everyone in our community, and I know that the sessions are jam-packed, that people wait at their computer at something like 7:30 in the morning waiting for the list. And if you're 10 minutes late, the list is already filled, and there are typically 30 to 40 people at each session. So, you know, this, there's obviously a great desire for this in our community, and I will certainly wholeheartedly support it.
Councilor Wallace?
I wasn't really looking to ask any questions, but since you've given me the floor, I really appreciate it. So, just let me go from here. Anyone out, I don't want to be, you know, I shouldn't be this interactive, but I'm going to. Anyone out there that enjoys pickleball, has ever played pickleball, and wants to continue to do pickleball, could I see a show of hands? Wow, okay. Patty, I figured your hand would be up, too. Now, of all the people that raised their hands, how many of you actually did partake in tennis at one time in your life? Could I see a show of those hands? Yeah? Okay, good. See, this is, this is great because, see, I've got my own Fifty Shades of Grey going on here, and I, and I think I'm interested in this sport. I've, I've never played it, but I see all my contemporaries and the constituents that are really involved in it and love it, and so I'm interested in it, too. So, I'm going to wholeheartedly support this agenda item and this initiative as we move the sport forward.
Thank you, Councilor Wallace. Councilors, hearing no further discussion. I was going to, hearing no further discussion, but I'll move the question. All those in favor of moving the question, please? I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? The question will go to our clerk for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Cullen? Oh, sorry. Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
You unanimous?
Congratulations. I will give you a couple moments, if you're comfortable, to clear the hall. This is riveting stuff up here, but I know you guys got a game in the morning probably, so... While we're doing that, could I ask, please, that the school group come up for seating? Meg Brown, Mayo Brown, Christine Harmon, Mark Milne, Garth Mockwell, and David Penko. Please clear the hall. Thank you. Before we kick off the public school, I will ask, we have Councilor Beedenbender, who attended a very important meeting in Cape Cod Community College, so I'd ask for a two-minute synopsis, please, of the coyote-sponsored meeting, coyote-issue meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, President Crocker. Yeah, so I, the reason why I was late was I was attending the listening session that was conducted by the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, also known as Mass Wildlife, to discuss their coyote management program and to discuss, to hear concerns from the public regarding coyote hunting season, the coyote contest, and coyote management in general. It was, it began with a 40-minute presentation by Mass Wildlife in regards to how they run their coyote hunting season, but also just in general coyote biology and how coyotes operate within a suburban landscape. And then, that was followed by about an hour and 20 minutes of public comment, and it was, it was a packed house. It was a room about this size, and it was standing room only, and there were a lot of great comments, a lot of concerns. The primary, the fundamental concern people have is surrounding the contest, the coyote contest that is held by Powderhorn Outfitters, and the reason for that primarily comes down to hunting ethics and a lack of legitimate use, fair chase. So, what was great about it is that this was the first of two listening sessions. The second one's going to be on June 18th, and what they're also going to do between this, this listening session and the next is they'll start to put together, you know, some thoughts about how they, if they decide to make some reforms to the current regulations, how they might go about doing that. So, if anyone is interested, anyone who's listening, watching, interested in participating in the next meeting, it's at June 18th. We don't know the location yet, but stay tuned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Tinsley, on the end, please. On page seven, would you open up 2019-093 for me, please?
My pleasure. You can also find that on page 56 of our books, anyone who's wondering. Item number 2019-093, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of funding, the engineering and planning segment of the Phase Two of the field improvements as part of the Barnstable High School Sports Field Upgrade Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan as written.
I have a second. All those in favor of holding the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For rationale, could I get a speaker of our gallant speakers we have in front of us tonight?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. Dave Caniak, Director of Facilities, Barnstable Schools. This project is a continuation of our three-phase plan to improve the athletic fields at the Barnstable High School. The fiscal year '20 appropriation would be used for the engineering and planning segment of actually Phase, Phases Two and Three of the field improvements. These phases include improvement to the varsity softball field, the junior varsity baseball fields, all the soccer, practice soccer and field hockey fields. The work would consist of leveling, grading, and reorientation of the current fields and improvements to the natural turf and irrigation system. We'll also be doing some additional roadwork through the area as part of this. We've prior funding for this. We did a backstop replacement in the varsity baseball field. Money was appropriated for $35,000. As you recall, last year, we did the stadium bleachers, $1 million. And last year, we were also appropriated $4.6 million for Phase One, which I'm proud to say, glad to say that we've selected a contractor and we'll be breaking ground soon on Phase One.
Thank you very much. That's our rationale. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilors in favor of closing the public hearing, signify by saying aye. Any opposition, abstention? Counselors, what's your choice? Do we have any questions of the committee? Yes, Councilor Rap Grissette?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. If you could just refresh what the $4.5 million was funding and what you're going to be breaking ground on?
Okay. $4.5 million.
Okay, four point five was funded for the varsity baseball field with a multipurpose baseball field in it. It's what in the current slide, it's up there is the dark green area. Also includes the, all the support structures, bleachers, and infrastructure for that facility. It'd be a synthetic turf field. Lighting is included as well.
And is the reason you're at Lowell Field because of the condition, existing conditions there, or?
Well, we, we've pretty much decommissioned this field. We've been doing soil testing, geotechnical testing out there. We've already removed some of the equipment out there in anticipation of construction and groundbreaking, but we had, we had to do a lot of excavation out there to get all, do our geotech surveys, and it's been surveyed, so it's not very playable. Also removed some, some of the, I should say precious soils on there. We've tried to recycle the clay and infill, make sure we could for other fields.
If I could.
Follow-up, please.
The CFAC Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee that my fellow Counselor Schnep referred to earlier made comment regarding this project in our page, on page four of our, of their report, listing the justification for this project, but more importantly, the measurements of its success. So, I, I would hope that next year, when Phase One is complete, we have, are the fields at Division One standards, because that's what you're hoping to, to get? Has the incidence of injuries been reduced? Are more students participating in athletics, you know, at a higher rate? And how much more income are the fields producing? So, I'd be, I'd be anxious to see those results next year.
Of course.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any counselors follow-up? Yes, Counselor Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation. Could you clarify exactly what's included in Phase Two?
Phase Two would be the rest of the, the phases, Phase Two is the rest of the natural turf on the high school side, if you will. So, that area that's, that's bounded by the roadway closest to the stadium field and, and the new field, there are actually four fields there if you count them. There's a varsity softball field, which is right across the street from the tennis courts, and then there's a JV field, and then down below, there's two other small ball diamond softball fields, and there's multipurpose soccer and lacrosse fields. Then across the street, behind the tennis courts, that would be Phase Three. Behind the, behind the intermediate school.
So, if I remember, last year, I thought there was some road improvements included in Phase One?
Phase Two. With, Phase, Phase One, the improvements there will be to parking. The parking spaces will start at the, at the end, on the right side of the tennis courts, and go all the way to the middle school parking lot. There are eighty-one spaces there and all the drainage.
That's part of Phase One, or?
Yes, saves one. That'll be Phase One. So, we absolutely have to improve our parking at the varsity baseball field. It's been a major problem.
So, as part of this planning, I know that there has been concern brought up about the maintenance of our fields. Is that gonna be incorporated in the design, that these fields will stay at a certain level of, you know?
Yes, we hope to keep them at a, at a Division One level, top level of play. Yes.
You have a follow-up on this side? Are you comfortable? Yes. Counselor Rap Grissette?
I just wanna, just clarify, this is just for the engineering and planning of Phase Two.
Correct, correct.
And the proposed expenditures, which I think would be coming next year, is over six million dollars.
Yep.
Okay.
Six point five is what we're looking at. But we want, we really wanna, we really wanna take a good look at, at the natural turf fields this year and make sure that we're really doing things intelligently and do as much as we can with what we have and really do a good job.
Also, counselors? Any other counselors? Hearing none. I'd turn it over to the clerk for the roll call vote.
Counselors, Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
It's eleven yes.
I'd ask each counselor to help me tonight with two at a time. Counselor Tinsley, please, two nineteen zero ninety-four.
Yes, Mr. President. Move to a public hearing. Item number two thousand nineteen dash zero nine-four, appropriation and loan order in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars be appropriated for the purpose of funding the Barnstable Public School District-wide Communication Video Surveillance and Entry Improvement Project as outlined in the fiscal year two thousand twenty to fiscal year two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan as written.
Thank you. I have a first and second to move two thousand nineteen zero ninety-four to a public hearing. I would ask for a vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? We're in the public hearing. Could I get a rationale, please, from the bench?
This is a part of another multi-year project, which includes upgrades and improvements to the district's telephone, video surveillance, and door entry systems. These upgrades are improvements to a centralized voice-over IP telephone system, integrated video surveillance system district-wide, and entry systems. The new systems will work on the district's network. Initially, our efforts will focus on the district phone system, followed by surveillance and, and entry. Prior funding for this, we had in two thousand fifteen, two hundred thirteen thousand dollars, which we put toward on the internet and wireless access points and digital resources. In two thousand seventeen, we upgraded our infrastructure to support voice-over IP and video surveillance, and last year, we received an appropriation for two hundred fifty thousand dollars to start the actual conversion of schools over the voice-over IP and video surveillance. That was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We've already converted over the Barnstable High School. It's got a full voice-over IP phone system right now, and we've also done Barnstable United Elementary with a full, full voice-over IP system and two brand-new PA systems, so they're, they're up to snuff there. We'll be doing the intermediate school this summer, and we just started talking to vendors about video surveillance. We'll do the high school first. The goal there is to get the high school completed by the start of next school year and then continue on with all the other schools. Of course, the reason for doing this is our infrastructure right now for video and phone systems at all the schools. It's, it's, it's pretty shabby, and it's, it's, it's really, really just a patch-together system all over, so.
Thank you for that rationale. In the future, Dave, I'll ask you to bring the mic just a little closer.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any public wish to speak to this item when the public hearing? Hearing no public. I'd ask for a motion to close the public portion. Second? All those in favor of moving the public, closing the public portion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition, abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, any questions? Hearing no questions. I'd turn it over to the clerk for the roll call vote.
Counselors, Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Counselor Hebert, would you help me for two, please? Two thousand nineteen zero ninety-five.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is opening for a public hearing, roll call. Item number twenty nineteen dash zero nine-five, appropriation and loan order in the amount of one million dollars be appropriated for the purpose of funding the Barnstable High School Synthetic Turf Replacement Project as outlined in the fiscal year twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan.
Second?
I have a first and a second of interest going into the public hearing for two thousand nineteen zero ninety-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstention? We're in the public hearing. Could I get a rationale, please?
Sure. This, this project is, the request is for the removal and replacement of the existing synthetic turf, sports turf at the Barnstable High School Stadium. The project includes removal and proper disposal of the existing turf, regrade of the existing base, leveling stone, and inlaid sports markings, and replacement of the infill. Existing turf is nearing the end of life. It's, it's over eight years old at this point. It's becoming increasingly difficult to groom. It's slippery, and due to infill buildup on the top, it will not go back down into the, into the base where it belongs, and, and it's been also causing some safety issues. Some prior funding for this stadium was, we did the bleachers last year. That project's complete, just over a little million dollars, and impacts on this would be just reduced, reduced operating and repair budgets, main cost on the field. A few pictures there. We do have, actually, the right photo is actually, we believe, a divot from somebody misusing the turf for some purpose, but as you can see in the left photo, you can see the infill actually laying on the surface, and it just won't go in, and it's, it's really severe on the south section, which is closer to the parking lot. If you go on the north section, it's not as bad, but there's just not as much play up there.
Thank you very much. We're in a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to address the issue? Hearing none. I'd take a motion to close the public portion.
Second?
I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Thank you. Counselors? Yes, Counselor Rap Grissette?
So, just to be, for my education, this actually is a, you're using eight hundred eighty-six thousand from a previous appropriation?
Correct.
So, the project's actually one point eight million?
No, no.
The total? Explain to me.
So, what we're doing here, Counselor, is we had a previous appropriation for another school project for which we didn't borrow the entire amount due to the project coming in under budget. So, we have that excess borrowing authorization in that project. We're rescinding that. So, that frees up additional funds that we can use for something else, and we're proposing to use that borrowing authorization for this project.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Beeden Bender?
Thank you. So, this is a subject of which I know nothing about, so I have just some basic questions. So, it, it says that this is only eight years old, this turf. Is this typical, or is this related to a maintenance issue? If it's typical, is this something we should look forward to doing again in eight years? And is this the typical, typical kind of cost for this? So, I'm kind of curious if this is really sort of a recurring thing, or if, is it more of a maintenance thing, or?
Okay. It, it really, it, it really is a product of use. This field gets used an awful lot for a lot of different things, not only sports. It's used for exercise. There are people out there walking on it in flat shoes. The band uses it, and it takes, it takes a lot of, a lot of wear. And synthetic turf is a lot like carpeting. It has memory, and the more you stand on it, eventually you break the blades and they start laying down, and they don't come back up. And what happens is the infill stays on top. Eight to ten years is normal for a field, for most fields, is what they will see in public spaces. Professional fields and collegiate fields last a lot longer, but they only play games on them. They don't practice on them. The public does not go on them. It's why they always look so good, and they last much longer. It's about, about ten hours a week is normal on a play. That's about, right, and for the grooming thing. We, our fields see a lot more than ten hours. I forget what the field study showed, the number of hours of play, but it was, it was significant, a huge hour. So, that's really, it's just a, a product of how much they're used. Infills have gotten better, and turfs have gotten better. We were looking at some really nice products for the, the baseball field, for the varsity baseball field, and we would use a similar product here. Probably will not use crumb rubber, which has been controversial. There are some other products out there now that are, are, are better for that and less, less of a health hazard. So, we're looking at using those and seeing what, you know, budget dictates. We'll dictate what we use, but we're gonna use something that will last longer and, and hold up better. And we will, you know, we, right now, we do do a regimented maintenance plan. We do it every six weeks. We groom the field, we clean it, which is what the manufacturer recommends, and we go by that. Okay? And we've had, as long as I've been, in the last six years, I've also had a professional company come in twice a year with their machine, and they do another grooming, which is a little more, it's a little more intense, if you will, moves, really moves the infill around, and they also do hardness testing for us with a G-max to make sure that, you know, it's, the field is soft enough, and, and they paint it for us. So, so we have been maintaining it. Okay?
Also, Counselor Beeden Bender? Counselor Levek?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, with that being said, is it possible, or did you foresee with the other new fields that this football field will actually, this field will actually get some less use and maybe last longer with the improvements, not only in the material, but also in the fact that we have other areas now, maybe that the marching band doesn't have to practice on the turf or different things like that? Do you foresee that?
Yeah, that is the plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Yes, Counselor Wallace?
Will this create a safer environment for our student athletes to compete?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselors? I, I would like to suggest also, Counselor Beeden Bender was on point. We all know there was a little learning curve when we first got the turf, so we weren't not happy. We have to must be honest with the first year or two of how we handled it, but thank you to your stewardship. We certainly turned that around and got some life out of it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hearing no further questions. I'd turn it over. All set? Yes, Counselor Hebert?
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna vote yes, of course, but the point is well-taken. On, we're used to doing sacrificial sand at beaches, particularly Sandy Neck, and it seems like it's really a sacrificial item that just kind of goes away. So, I think it was a well-asked question, because we're just trying to see how long things can last, and, so I'm gonna just, again, from all of our edification, when we look at the cost to how much it is used, we're getting our money's worth out of this, and, and safety, and professionalism, and keeping our, our schools up to anybody else's, this is a good thing. We will be voting yes, but of course, thank you very much.
Any other counselors? There was a discussion, as I recall, between leadership that there was a recycling possibility, too. Are we moving ahead still with that?
Absolutely. We're, we're recycling.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I'll turn it over to the clerk for a vote.
Counselors, Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Off the dice at this moment?
Uh, sorry, Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
That would be ten.
Passes. Thank you very much. On the two, are you for my second as well?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Yes, please, Counselor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is open for a public hearing, roll call. Item number two thousand nineteen dash zero nine-six, appropriation and loan order in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars be appropriated for the purpose of funding the Barnstable Public Schools Campus-Wide Mechanical Upgrades Project as outlined in the fiscal year twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan.
I have a first and a second. All in favor of opening for the public hearing, please? Two thousand nineteen ninety-six, signify by saying aye, one more time. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. We're in the public hearing. Could I get a rationale, please?
Sure. This is district, district-wide mechanical system upgrades to include boilers, burners, pumps, in all school-owned buildings, including the Ostriville and Cartuiic buildings. Much of our existing equipment is well over thirty years old, and it's just time to start doing required replacements and upgrades. We did have some prior project funding. In two thousand sixteen, we were appropriated three hundred fifty thousand dollars, which we used to replace the burners at the high school and the intermediate school on our big boilers. In two thousand seventeen, we received a seventy thousand dollar appropriation, which we spent for pump flanges at all the high school and the intermediate school. Impacts on this from a budget perspective, we would have a positive impact, obviously, upgrading all of these units start to more high-efficiency pieces of equipment. All the boiler upgrades will qualify for MSBA assistance, which is a good thing, finally, and we could qualify for up to a thirty-five percent rebate on boiler replacements. This'll be a multi-year project. It will take, we're looking at probably going out four to five years and spending around two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year at the schools.
Any public wish to speak to this item? Hearing none, I'd take a vote to close the public meeting. Second?
Second.
Any abstentions? So be it. Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions? Yes, Counselor Schnep?
Mr. President, is there any benefit to accelerating these mechanical upgrades?
Uh, yeah, there is. I mean, you know, it's, which is function of, of dollars and actually bandwidth, you know, and getting, getting out for the bids and having the, you know, getting it done. But, again, we, you know, we have some old boilers, we know that we need to address, so we would probably do one or two boilers at a time. The other thing is just the timeframe. You know, we have a short, very short time period to do work in the district, we have two months in the summer, so we try to get everything done when the students aren't around. Some of these, some of these replacements will be noisy, dirty, require some hazardous removal materials, so we have to be careful and selective how much we do. Okay?
Well, I would recommend that anytime you identify something that could get done sooner, then please bring it back.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Counselor Schnep. Any follow-up, everybody? Counselors, to my left, hearing none, I turn it over to clerk for a vote.
Counselors? Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rapgrasseti?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you. Counselor Schnep, I'd ask you to assist me with two, if you could, we're starting with 2019-097.
This is all business for public hearing, requiring a roll call vote of two-thirds. 2019-097 appropriation loan and transfer order in the amount of $1 million be appropriated for the purpose of funding the Barnstable Public School, Barnstable High School environmental lab project as outlined in the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan.
I have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're in a public hearing, I'm looking for a rationale.
I'd like to offer the rationale for this one.
Thank you.
Near and dear to my heart.
Meg Mayo Brown, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, my superintendent.
Thank you. So, town manager Mark Els and I, I think, started our positions at the same time, and if he said water quality to me one time, he said it to me 500 times in that span. So, during our weekly town manager superintendent meetings, we often talk about how can the schools support the community and what's occurring in the town. So, hearing the words water quality over and over again, I thought, you know, what is it that we could do at our high school to prepare our students to engage with the community in a vocational or technical aspect? We launched a program advisory committee. Long story short, the Department of Education gave us approval to run a vocational Chapter 74 program for environmental science, which, in essence, our students could graduate with a water quality certificate, go right into the workforce, or they could go on to post-secondary education and pursue that career. We had applied for a $100,000 grant through the Executive Office of Education and received that. We've been encouraged to apply for a $500,000 grant for this lab, which we have submitted about a week ago, so if that funding comes through, our request would be lowered to 500,000. So, this will enable our students to have the sort of state-of-the-art technology in their classrooms to pursue this field of study. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to the public matter? Hearing none, I ask for a vote to close the public hearing. Do I have any second? Thank you, first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, what's your choice? Yes?
I just want to say, this is really exciting. This is such a great opportunity. I'm so glad the two of you have these meetings and these conversations, you know, especially when you think of what we're dealing with, with water resources and, and the quality of our water, and I, I would say, it's safe to say that there are numerous communities across the country that, that are in sensitive ecosystem areas that are struggling like we are, and I think this is a field that's going to be ripe for opportunity. So, you know, congratulations, great, great putting your two heads together and, and putting this one together. It's a terrific opportunity for our students, and I think really puts BHS right at the forefront of, of what's going on, so thanks.
Counselors? Yes, Counselor Hebert?
So, this is absolutely awesome, and, you know, you're, you're on the cutting edge, you're ahead. I've asked the community college to do what you're doing, and you're ahead of them. I cannot thank you enough, so proud of our school, I'm so proud of you preparing our students to go into the workforce. Thank you, thank you.
Counselors? Yes, Counselor Leveque?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this would be open for, for the students of Barnstable or school choice students in the fall of 2021, is that the plan?
That is, that is the plan. I would say we have a living lab outside of the school right now that our students are accessing. This provides an internal lab and pending Dave's schedule to get the work done, I'd have him answer the question in terms of when it would be ready.
By 2021.
Very good. And is, so there are instructors in place as well?
Yes, Mike Smith, our environmental science teacher at the high school, will oversee this program.
Very good. Any, any chance that our town manager Els would possibly take a session here and there, maybe be a guest speaker?
Oh, I'm sure we could. I'm sure we'd rely on him, yes.
Talk him into it. He's not listening right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
They've nominated you to come to class.
Head judge professor.
Yeah. He always takes the challenge. Thank you, Mark. Counselor Schnep?
Yes, I just wanted to echo my fellow counselors in the, in the support of this exciting project, and I'm very glad to hear you are pursuing some grant funding, that's always a good way to get that state support, and it sounds like you also answered the question that you already have staff that would be able to continue with this program, so, thank you.
Any other counselors? Yes, Counselor Dagwan?
Yes, I think this is a great program, and it incorporates science and technology, which is the STEM program, it's two of the elements that's focusing on the future of education and keeping our students ahead of the game, so I think this is great, and as one of my counselors said, the fact that you, you know, tried for the grant, that's even, you know, it's like icing on the cake to, to assist the town in, in supporting this. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Hearing none, I will make my comment. The town manager and myself have been after the county to enlarge their lab, it would create a great symmetry between all of us. We also thought at one time it was going to Cape Cod Community College, but certainly any start is a tremendous start, and the field is wide open for these kids, so a great opportunity, thank you very much. Hearing no further questions, I turn it over to clerk for a call, please, roll call.
Counselors? Leveque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rapgrasseti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Schnep, 2019-098.
This item is all business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call vote of two-thirds. Appropriation number 2019-098, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $1,500,000 for the purpose of funding the Barnstable High School and Barnstable Intermediate School rooftop unit ventilator replacement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan.
I have a first and a second, all those in favor of taking to a public hearing, 2019-098, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we're in a public hearing, and I'd look for a rationale, please.
Okay, this, this is to perform engineering and design efforts, to develop specifications and bid documents for a phase plan, this is actually phase two of our high school RTU replacement, to replace and upgrade RT units at the, at the high school and the middle school. An RTU means rooftop unit ventilator. The existing units of both locations are getting, are greater than 20 years old, and many of the units, the air conditioning compressors have failed and are not repairable. Additionally, the chassis frame and cabinet compressors of the units are deteriorating, allowing infiltration of air and water into the space. Prior funding, we, $2 million appropriation, which you all know, we did our, our high school library with, and we replaced three rooftop units there as part of the library renovation. They're up and running, space is, is, is much more comfortable now. We foresee at least a 10% reduction in operating cost with the use of VFD motors and, and high-efficiency units throughout. This would, this phase would be replacement of three units into 1400s section of the high school, which is near the, the gyms, those sections there.
Thank you, we're, that was our rationale, we're in a public hearing for 2019-98, any of the public wish to come forward? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public portion. Do I have a second? I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstention? Please record it. Counselors, what's your wishes? Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Schnep?
Mr. President, I think last fall, we had to have the schools start late because of hot weather. Could you tell me how many of our schools have a problem with being cool enough to start school? And I, I know that, I'm thinking these two schools, the ventilators are probably one of the reasons why we need to?
No, that wasn't the rea, well, the reason that we, we had our heat day last year was Centerville Elementary, mostly, and BWB, which are two buildings that don't have air conditioning at all.
Okay.
And, uh, just, they use unit ventilators. The BWB building will be getting new unit ventilators this summer.
Okay.
An appropriation from last year, but, even with new unit ventilators, it still would be warm in there, they just heat and, and move air, they do not cool.
Okay.
Any further questions, counselors? Yes, Counselor Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dave, I just have a question, yes, so, how many RTUs are involved in these two buildings? How many total RTUs are up there?
On the intermediate school, there are 13.
Okay.
And on the high school, you make me, there are at least 13 or 14 total.
So, less than 30. Obviously, we don't know what the total BTUs are. And the total request is about a million and a half dollars?
For three units, yeah.
For three units?
Yes.
Three out of the total 30?
Three out of the total 30, yes.
So, these units run $500,000 a piece?
About $350 each, and we're replacing all the ductwork, we're putting in VAV boxes throughout, so we can get better control. The old, if you're familiar with the old technologies, it's hot trunk, cold trunk.
Yeah.
And that's what they are, and it's very hard to mix air, and it's a poor design.
So, there'll be ductwork involved as well?
Ductwork involved, and also some reinforced, some reinforcement of the, of the structure. These units are actually, newer units are actually heavier.
Mm-hmm. So, they'll need new curb units?
New curb, and even, even some, even some structural improvements.
The top of the building?
Yeah, yeah, and then we put new ceilings and new lighting while we're there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors? Dave, these run on a different gas than the previous, is that what we have?
These run, these are all hot water.
Terrific. How about the HVAC portion, the condensers?
The air, well, the condensers are electric, but they?
Yeah, terrific.
They all have heat recovery, you know, efficient units, and they all have marine coatings, which the older units don't, you can tell by the photos, so we're getting them coated as well.
Very important, thank you. I'll turn it over to clerk for a roll call vote.
Counselors? Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rapgrasseti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Rapgrasseti, could you help me with two, please, starting with 2019-099?
Yes, Mr. President. This is all business, public hearing, roll call, two-thirds, general fund capital improvement plan, item 2019-099, appropriation and loan order in the amount of 500,000 for the purpose of funding the Centerville Elementary School unit ventilator upgrade project as outlined in the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan as presented.
Do I have a second? I have a first and a second. All those in favor going into the public hearing portion of 2019-099, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? My screen's on. Hearing none, we're in the public portion, I'd look, my, it's off. I'd look, I'd look for a rationale, please.
Okay, this is to replace unit ventilators at the Centerville Elementary School. This will be the, the fourth phase in, in our, in our unit ventilator replacement. Obviously, they're old, they're old units, you can see by the photo, they just are very inefficient, leaky, and don't meet a, a lot of the ASH, the ASHRAE standards and the, even the standards required by DES for, for air changes. Prior funding, we've had $250,000 in '16, '17, and '18, we used that appropriation to do all of High West, including the gym and, and locker rooms there. We'll be doing BWB this summer, we're actually out to bid right now for that, and we'll complete that over the summer, and then this appropriation will allow us to do the Centerville Elementary School, is where we had a bigger problem last year too. So, again, the units will be moving air better in there, it'll be fresher, it'll be moving more efficiently, and we'll have more equal heating throughout the building as well. And this will complete our unit ventilator replacement for the entire district, okay, at this point.
Thank you, that's our rationale. Any public wish to speak to 2019-099? Hearing none, and I'd take our motion to close the public portion, first and second it, please. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none, counselors, what's your choices? Yes, Counselor Rapgrasseti?
Just, so, this completes it. Has Catuette Elementary been replaced?
Not yet, no.[1577.12] It'll be fresher, it'll be moving more efficiently, and we'll have more equal heating throughout the building as well. And this will complete our unit ventilator replacement for the entire district.
Thank you. That's our rationale. Any public wish to speak to 2019-099? Hearing none, and I take a motion to close the public portion. First and seconded, please. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none. Councillors, what's your choices? Yes, councillor Rap Grissette?
Just, so, this completes it. Has Katuit Elementary been replaced?
Not yet, no.
So...
We may do something different down there when we, when we get to that building. Because we're gonna have to replace the entire heating plant, come in there with gas. So, I'm looking at some different ideas rather than unit ventilators.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Councillors? Yes, councillor?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Dave, again, these are just, these are wall units that are mounted on the wall. And I'm assuming that the, the math has kind of been done about maybe retrofitting the whole system and going with, again, maybe an RTU that would feed these properties? Is that...
Well, these are, these are digital units. They can be digitally controlled. We will tie them, they all have back-end capability, so we'll tie them into our network. So, that's the plan there. And the older schools, we're not gonna, we may change the heating plants to two-stage when we do it, but, you know, we'll still use either steam or hot water in these spaces.
So, with, with councillor Rap Grissette's question, so maybe the Katuit may be a different...
Yeah.
A different process in terms of...
We're thinking about something different entirely, yeah.
Councillors? Hearing none, I will point out in the chart, councillor Beeden Bender and I had the discussion that even though these are fifty-year-old units, you're only projecting ten to fifteen percent savings? Is that because you're being modest?
Yeah.
Or is that because, okay? We're hoping. We're hoping.
Every little, every little bit.
Yes. Hearing no further discussions from the councillors, I'd move it to our clerk for a vote.
Councillors. Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
That's eleven yes.
Councillor Rap Grissette, could you help me again with one hundred, please?
Item 2019-100, under Old Business Public Hearing, majority vote. Appropriation and transfer order in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of funding the comprehensive school facilities assessment. It's outlined in the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024, capital improvement plan as presented.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor going into a public hearing for 2019-100? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none, we're in the public hearing, and we're looking for a rationale, please.
Okay. This is to retain professional consulting services to conduct a district-wide study of our facilities, future enrollments, trends to aid in development of a long-rent range strategic planning tool. The most recent assignment was a TAMS report, which was done in July of 2003. It's no longer applicable, and it really needs to be updated. So, we're just trying to get some, some accurate information on the district, on everything, so we could make some informed decision-making.
Thank you. That's a great rationale. I'm looking for the public. Any public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public portion. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. Councillors, what's your wishes? Councillor Neary.
Again, Dave, thanks. Appreciate that. Mr. President, just a question. Should this be voted in the affirmative? What's the timeframe before you'd get results of that study? Do you have an idea?
Well, you'd have to go out for RFPs for consultant, and it'd probably, probably take probably a year, I would bet.
So, fiscal again, 2021 seems like a good year.
Next year, this time, we should have, we should be able to report that we have a, a report.
Thank you.
Yes, councillor Beeden Bender.
Thank you. So, this is for consulting services to conduct the assessment, which is the foundation for the strategic planning tool, which is to set up scheduled maintenance district-wide? Is that the ultimate goal of that?
Well, I think more to look at, at our facilities over the long term, and will they meet the needs of what enrollment is, population, our, just our facilities in general, our learning and space? You know, are we doing the right things? I think it's an acid test in some, for us.
Any other councillors? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of 219-100, as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. I am on to councillor Wallace, please. 2019-101.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business, open for a public hearing. Item number 2019-101, General Fund Capital Improvement Plan. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the Hyannis West Elementary School Roof Replacement Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024, capital improvement plan. And, Mr. President, this is a roll call, two-thirds required.
Thank you, councillor Wallace. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of opening the public hearing on 2019-101? Please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none, we're in the public hearing process. I'll take a rationale.
Okay. This is to replace the existing roof at the Hyannis West Elementary School. Shingles on that roof are greater than twenty years old, and they're starting to show signs of life. They're starting to crack. Denial or postponement of this would result in some interior water damage. The project may qualify for MSBA funding since it's a roof on the accelerated program. Of course, impacts on the operating budget, reduced heating costs, and, and maintenance costs on it as well.
Thank you for that rationale. We're in a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to come forward? Hearing none, I take a motion to close the public hearing. And a second? Thank you. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. Councillors, what's your pleasure? Yes, councillor Schnep.
Mr. President, could you give us an update on the emergency roofing work that was done or authorized?
Certainly, certainly, so...
In the cafeteria?
Yep, we've con, we've, we've contracted with L and L Contracting. They've been on, they mobilized about three weeks ago. They're fabricating steel in their shop right now for the, the first few trusses that they're going to rebuild. And we plan to be out of there by the middle of June.
So, how does this...
This is a, these are roof shingles, so this is the exterior. Right now, this, this work we're doing is, is structural interior, in the cafeteria only. But then we'll put a brand-new roof on it, too.
So, you anticipate being able to use entire school by next fall?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Councillor Rap Grissette?
Thank you. Will this roof be solar panel ready? Why's that?
Why, well, I, we've not considered it, because we, again, haven't really looked at putting panels on it. I mean, we'd have to do a lot more work. But I'll be honest with you, I don't like solar panels on slow roofs. Because they leak. But, but...
It was doing so well.
I know, I'm, I'm, I know, I, but I, I... I know, I have two of them, I have another roof, too. We have, we haven't looked into it.
You know, when, when you mentioned that you're replacing trusses with steel, you know, because a lot of times what it is, is structural can handle solar panels. I just, you know, rather than deforesting for solar panels at every opportunity, I think we should take advantage of rooftops. And it's unfortunate that you feel that way, but perhaps others don't. So, I would, I would encourage in the future to, to perhaps look at, at that.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at it. We could certainly look at putting solar panels on these other buildings, and I will take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Yes, councillor Beeden Bender.
Just to add additional weight, I would, would concur with, with councillor Rap Grissette on that, that I think anytime we're doing any kind of structural work on the rooftop of any of our buildings, we should look at that opportunity, because the other part of it is, I mean, it's a potential cost savings to the town long-term as well. So, I think, I think it behooves us to, to make sure that we look at all of the options.
Thank you, councillor Beeden Bender. Councillor Hebert?
So, three's the charm, right? So, I, I've become aware that there are some investors looking. It would cost us nothing to put more solar on our school properties, be they the parking lot, rooftops. The companies that do this kind of work, they give guarantees. They're not gonna put holes in our, in our systems, in our, in our roofs. If they do any damage, they're responsible for it. They insure them, they take care of them. So, it's just a positive cash flow for us. And so, I would greatly encourage us to continue to look at that. The timing right now is very, very good for us because of the SMART program that exists within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, for me, I think it's, it could be a win for us. And I had planned to make an appointment with the superintendent, and I planned to follow through with that, because I just think every dime that we can take in and help with some other projects that we might have becomes very important for us. So, I'll be the third. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I was on the plane, trying to stay awake, going through this massive book here, I managed to dovetail a bunch of pages in this, this thing. And I don't know, councillor Levec can seal the dovetails. But each one of these dovetail pages had a four-letter word in it called roof, right? And I'm not a proponent for solar. I'm not for it or against it, but I think that, well, I know that. I was at the home show last weekend at Barnstable High School. And I can tell you, there's a lot of solar companies out there right now. I think there were at least four companies vying for, for business. I believe that when they, it first came out, in my opinion, I think it was a little bit of the Wild, Wild West in terms of what you were getting for product. But, but it's a competitive space now. I think we would be remiss in at least not posing the question, what does it cost? What are the benefits? And if the math doesn't work, the math doesn't work. But I think, again, we would be remiss at least not looking into that part of the equation. So, every time the dovetail page comes up with that word, I'm gonna probably ask the same question. It's something that, that, you know, if we can get these buildings to, to, you know, anywhere close to a net zero on, on electricity cost, I mean, that's, that's more money for programs, more money to pay for those fields every eight years, you know? So, that's my two cents worth anyways.
Thank you. Councillor Hebert?
I could do a follow-up. Thank you. I don't want the public that might be listening off of us not to recognize the fact that you have a lot of solar panels on the high school, and I believe also on our intermediate school, that you had, you know, just the high school. But apparently, you have quite a few of them up there.
We have seven hundred and fifty KV on the, on the high school. And we have twenty-five on the West Village Elementary School, which we have about seventy-five leaks in the roof. That's, that's why...
In which high school?
West Village is elementary.
At the West Village one, not the high school?
The high school, no leaks, because they're not, they're ballasted.
They're ballasted, okay, yeah.
At West Village, they're anchored. We, we do have a severe leaking problem there.
Right.
That we've been wrestling with for about a year and a half.
Okay. So, I, I do want to give you credit. I mean, it's not like, it's not like we have not done any solar.
No, it's not. And it's not like, I, I, you know, I just, I'm sensitive because of the roof down there.
I would, you know...
But it's been a real problem.
I would be sensitive to that, too, and I think we have to look at that. And it gives me encouragement that there are ground-mounted, and there are also carport-type that are available, very nice. The backup of that, why I found myself talking to our principal at the, at the high school, Mr. Clark, is that with the students walking out throughout the world, saying their future is at stake here, we have twelve years or something in order, I think that the fact that we are positive, and we're looking, and we're working, and you're doing the thing with the wastewater and the clean water, the laboratory, and all that type of thing, you're responding positively. So, I'm not expecting our students to walk out of school. I think our students know how much you care, how much we care for them and for their future. And when we do these kind of things, when we say, we're gonna do all that we can to address climate change, I think it's a positive thing instead of, we're not, we're not reacting. We're, we're leading our students. Congratulations. Thank you.
Councillors, anything else? I would like to bring something forward. I wouldn't want to say on your behalf, but it's that you were kind enough to invite me to the school to go up into the attic. I know clearly that the spacing of the truss, that the size and calibration of the truss lumber, the truss supports are in question, and then what has caused us the problem that we're having in the cafeteria. And that was due to just putting shingles up on the roof, let alone anything beyond the shingle weight. So, I, I'm taking your face-value discussion as something even a little more additional, because I don't believe the pre-truss system on that building is really very conducive to the system. And we have damage for a specific reason with something far less than a magnitude of, of panels up there, so... But please listen to my councillors. They would like you to consider it as we go forward. And we are all aware also that you've been fighting the roof issue because of the installation at the high school, which has been a huge problem for us as well. I'm off to the clerk treasurer for a roll call vote, please.
Councillors. Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Councillor Wallace, 2019-102, please.
Thank you again, Mr. President. This is Old Business, open for a public hearing. It's item number 2019-102. The General Fund Capital Improvement Plan. Appropriation and loan order in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the Centerville Elementary School Roof Replacement Project as outlined in fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024, capital improvement plan. Mr. President, this is a roll call vote, two-thirds required, as written.
Thank you. I have a first and a second to open a public hearing on 2019-102, the last article of the school, public school system for the CIP. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? No, we're in the public hearing. Rationale, please.
Okay. Centerville Elementary School, again, we'd like to replace the shingle roof there, same as High West. The existing roof is over twenty years old, and it's nearing end of life, resulting in water damage in some areas. This would also qualify for MSBA funding, which if we get it, would be thirty-five percent. And we will look at solar panels here and see if it makes sense. And again, the operating budget impacts would be reduced heating and ongoing maintenance costs, and, and, and energy savings. So, we'll look into it.
Thank you for the rationale. Anybody want to speak to this issue from the public, please? Hearing none, I take a motion to close the public hearing on 2019-102. I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? None. Councillors, any questions? Yes, councillor Dagwan.
Since you've been talking about solar, I just wanted to know what, what type of maintenance is needed for solar?
Well, you're supposed to keep them clean, but then they, they also tell you that a lot of them clean themselves in the rain. In a heavy seagull environment, that's hard to believe. Spend some time, I'll take you on the high school roof in the summertime when they're nesting.
I'm fighting with my roof, too.
You don't want to be up there, and it's, 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 it's pretty nasty. They like, they like, do like to nest under panels on roofs. And we have quite the collection. So, but we don't do any maintenance, because all the panels that we have are, are managed by a solar company. So, they're, they're responsible for all the maintenance. We just get benefit of the energy for the space, and they get the wrecks, which is where the real money is.
Do they do it yearly to look at them?
You know, I don't know. I don't know, councillor. They're up there, they're, they're quite often with other issues. They have problems with, with their, with their switchgear a lot, and with their gear. They seem there, at least at the high school. We don't see them a lot at West Villages. But we do have, we do have a real leak issue there that we've been dealing with.
Thank you.
Any other councillors? Hearing none, I have one question. Garth, how are you tonight? All right. Hearing no other questions, I move the question. I move it to the clerk for closure, please. Didn't want to miss you, brother.
Councillors. Tinsley? Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you. We're on to the airport. Let's switch some seats, please.
President Crocker and members of the town council, can I just express my gratitude in your ongoing and continuing support of our public schools and our over five thousand students that benefit from your work each and every day? that benefit from your work each and every day? And I hope you're able to join us Monday night as the grand opening, reopening of the library, which we were here two years ago asking for an appropriation of over three and a half million dollars. And it is a beautiful space and I wish you could see the faces of our students as they come in and work there each and every day. So thank you for your investment in that and all of our projects.
Also dedicated to a beautiful man.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, counselors, if you want a one-minute break while we switch over, please do that. We'll be back. It's two minutes of before, it's 28, so let's start at 9:30, 9:30, please. Airport next.
Counselors. Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Here.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Present.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Here.
Neary?
Here.
Schnep?
Here.
Stein-Hilber?
Here.
Tinsley?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Just missing Mr. Hebert.
Counselor Hebert, but we have quorum without him, am I correct?
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much. Counselor Stein-Hilber, would you get us started, please, on 2019-103? And I'd like to welcome the manager and assistant airport manager tonight with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under Old Business, I'd like to move item 2019-103 to a public hearing. Appropriation and Loan Order in the Amount of $220,000 be appropriated for the purpose of funding the airport's replacement of aircraft rescue and firefighting ARFF equipment as outlined in the Fiscal Year 2020, Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a first and a second. Please record Counselor Hebert's with us. All those in favor of going to a public hearing on 2019-103, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. I'd look for a rationale. And again, I'd like to thank Katie and Matt for coming out and being with us tonight.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for having us here. This piece of equipment, the replacement of the aircraft rescue and firefighting equipment, is to enable us to meet our FAA Part 139 certification requirements for being available for rescue equipment and to have our team available if necessary at the airport. When the FAA approves equipment, approved equipment is eligible for replacement and FAA grant assistance, the rescue equipment must be replaced as necessary. This project is to replace a 1999 Ford F-450 heavy-duty flatbed truck with a fire combat unit that sits on the back of it. The project was deferred in 2016, 2017, and 2018 due to lack of funds or deferment by the FAA or Mastah Aeronautics Division, which typically provides funding assistance for us for these types of projects. Just want to make a note on the project that this piece of equipment, again, is necessary for us to meet our 139 requirements. This particular piece of equipment, we do have three rescue pieces of equipment. This is our smallest unit. It enables our operations department to be able to respond from any location on the airfield. So as you can imagine, our operations departments, they wear multiple hats. So not only are they our aircraft rescue and firefighters, but they're also charged with analyzing and inspecting the airfield. So at any point in time, our staff could be out on a back fence monitoring the safety and security of our airfield. And they can do so in this piece of equipment, which also allows them to respond as quickly as possible from any location on the field.
Thank you for the public rationale. We are, thank you for the rationale. We are in the public hearing portion of the meeting. All those, anyone wish to come forward to speak of this in the public hearing, please say so. Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Second?
Aye.
I got a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye. Opposition? Abstention? Hearing none. Counselors, where are we? Yes, Counselor Schnep?
Quick question. Have you really cast your capital appropriations? I noticed that the, we had appropriated aircraft firefighting equipment. It doesn't look like it's been purchased yet. Is there usually a time lag in terms of our appropriation and the purchase of equipment?
There was actually two, we rescinded this three times for this piece of equipment.
Same piece from last year?
For the same piece of equipment. So you saw this once before in 2016, 17, and 18.
So it's gone up in price since then?
Yes.
It was $145 last year?
Over the past several, of several years, it has gone up in price. We found that the skid in the combat unit that we will put on the back of that bed, the tools and equipment are more expensive than they have been in the past.
Any other counselors? Hearing none, I turn it over to the clerk treasurer. The clerk, she's no treasurer, she's my clerk, for a vote, please. Roll call vote.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Just missing Mr. Hebert.
Counselor Hebert, but we have quorum without him, am I correct?
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much. Counselor Stein-Hilber, would you get us started, please, on 2019-103? And I'd like to welcome the manager and assistant airport manager tonight with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under Old Business, I'd like to move item 2019-104 to a public hearing. Appropriation and Loan Order in the Amount of $490,000 be appropriated for the purpose of funding the airport's airport rescue and firefighting building roof repairs as outlined in the Fiscal Year 2020 to Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor of going into a public hearing on 2019-104, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. A rationale, please.
Sure, thank you. Why do we need to replace the aircraft rescue and firefighting roof? The building was designed and constructed in 1995. It houses our garage for our emergency vehicles, the rescue vehicle that was just up there on the screen, observation tower, command center for our operations team, locker rooms, bathrooms, and lounge. It also serves as our pilot lounge in our customer receiving facility. And the maintenance section of the building, it also includes garage for trucks, office building, sand storage, and just maintenance shops in general. The project replaces the 1995 roof that is in really poor and failing condition. This has been presented before and we had to pull it back on a couple of occasions just because we didn't have the funds to be able to cover the project cost. Just to give you an example of what the roof looks like, it's a rubber roof, membrane roof, that has pulled away from the corners of the building and that has allowed water to infiltrate through the building. So the picture on the upper left-hand side, you can see the discoloring on the concrete is actually water infiltration into that building. On the right-hand side, you can see that the roof membrane has detached from the roof, allowing for that continued infiltration. It's really a project that we need to move forward on before we see some damage to some of our equipment and our office space that we have in that building. The FAA and Mastah typically will pay for a portion of the project. The project is a total of $490,000 with the share from the airport of just over $24,000. The share that Mastah and the FAA will participate in is typically the most, most of the roof that they will participate in, but oftentimes they'll look at the roof and they'll give us a percentage of that cost. So in other words, typically they won't cover the roof portion that is over our offices, but they will cover it for the storage equipment, which is the vast majority of that building. Thank you.
What a crazy preamble. Thank you, though, for that rationale. Makes everything much clearer. We're in the public portion of this hearing. Would anybody like to come forward from the public? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public portion.
Second?
I have a first and a second to close the public hearing portion of the meeting of this article. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? None. Counselors, questions, please? Counselor Rap Grissette?
This really is just a comment. And, you know, the four-letter word has come up, but you've got enough solar panels right where you are, so I'm not going to say anything.
I should have just said, "Yes, we'll look at it."
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll turn it back to the clerk for the roll call vote.
Counselors. Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Beeden Bender, would you help me out with two, please, starting with 105?
Yes. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, two-thirds vote. This is item number 2019-105. Airport Enterprise Fund Capital Improvement Plan. Appropriation and Loan Order in the Amount of $800,000 for the Purpose of Funding the Airport's Snow Removal Equipment Replacement Kodiak Snow Blower as outlined in the Fiscal Year 2020, Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
I have a first. Do I have a second to open the public hearing? Did I catch the second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Second, thank you. I have a first and a second to open the public hearing on 2019-105. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. We're in the public hearing and we'll take the rationale.
Great, thank you. Again, this is another piece of equipment that is eligible for FAA and Mastah Aeronautics Funds. It's used to satisfy our FAR Part 139 requirements and the certification that we have at the airport. This particular piece of equipment is a 1997 Kodiak diesel snow blower. The snow blower itself of this magnitude and of size for this piece of equipment is really essential for us to maintain our airfield, to clear our airfield, and to make sure that our runway and taxiway environment doesn't have any burms that an aircraft wing could actually hit during landing during a snow event. The project was deferred in previous years because of lack of funds. Let me just show you a quick picture of that vehicle. The vehicle looks like it's in good condition, but I will have to attest that it is not. The equipment is continuously being maintained by our very competent and very patient airport mechanic. I think almost every single snowstorm, it will work for a bit and then it goes into the mechanic shop to get fixed because something has not, something has come loose on the piece of equipment. So it is very dated, but it is very essential to our ability to make sure that we're opening the airfield in a timely manner. The picture in the far right shows the blower casting snow beyond the taxiway light so that the berm, a berm is not created. So it has a pretty good cast and without this piece of equipment, we would be out there with very small pieces, trucks and small plows to be able to push those burms back and we just wouldn't be able to open in a timely manner. The project itself is estimated at $800,000. Of that $800,000, $760,000 would come from grant funds from Mastah and from the FAA. Thank you.
Thank you for that rationale. We're in the public portion of the hearing. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to close the public portion. I have a first and a second, please. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion of 2019-105, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. Counselors? Hearing, yes, Counselor Schnep?
Just to follow the train of thought, when you say that there's a lack of funding, is that coming from the feds or the state? Is that where the problem is?
So I would have to say that this one is both. The airport itself not having funds over the past several years because of our financial situation, but also the FAA will look at their projects within the region and they'll determine what has a higher priority. So sometimes airports that might have a runway issue, the runways are the highest priority. So because this is equipment, it gets pushed back from time to time because they just have other priorities to deal with. Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors? Yes, Counselor Wallace?
What do we do with the old beat-up thing?
So typically what we do with that type of equipment is that we trade it in, we get some type of value for it. It will be reused for some other airport, I'm sure, but usually we use it for a trade-in value. If it's another piece of equipment that, say, it's a mowing piece of equipment or a piece of equipment that maybe Marston Mills Airport might be able to use, then they could pay that cost of what the trade-in value might be, but they're not going to need this type of equipment at the airport.
No, and I suppose it wouldn't be valued at $40,000, would it?
I'm not sure of the trade-in value at this point in time.
Thank you.
He's looking for a new ride to work. No, just so we're clear, it has to be declared surplus by the commission and then it would go off to whatever designs are possible. I do have one question myself. The snow blower, is that the front unit of a base unit behind it pushing it?
For, let me go back to the, so it's all one unit, so.
Oh, it doesn't detach?
That's an auger. No, that's just an auger. It brings the snow in, just like your snow blower at home, except this is much larger. It's the same premise.
My snow blower for my tractor, though the piece comes off and the bucket goes on?
No.
Not in this case.
Not in this case.
Thank you for the clarification. Hearing no further questions from the counselors, I move it to the clerk for a vote.
Counselors. Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
That's eleven yes.
Thank you, Counselor Beeden Bender, 219-106.
Thank you. This is old business, public hearing, roll call vote. Item number 2019-106. Airport Enterprise Fund Capital Improvement Plan. This is an appropriation and loan order in the amount of $230,000 for the purpose of funding the airport's snow removal equipment replacement, heavy-duty carrier vehicle with snow, with plow and sander, as outlined in the Fiscal Year 2020-Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second?
I have a first and a second to open the public hearing on 2019-106. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. We're in the public hearing and I'm looking for a rationale, please.
Great, thank you. Again, this piece of equipment is eligible for FAA and Mastah Aeronautics grant funding because it helps us meet our 139 certification requirements. It is a 1995 Ford heavy-duty carrier vehicle with an 11-foot plow and sander. The funds for this project were rescinded in 2017, again, going back to lack of priority for the FAA or lack of funds on the airport's part. This piece of equipment, again, is critical to allow the airport to open the airfield and the facility as soon as possible. It's 24 years old. It's showing signs of rust and there's some significant deterioration in the bed of the vehicle itself. At some point, it's going to be beyond repair for us, so we're looking to replace this so that we don't have a situation where this large piece of equipment that we use on a regular basis for our snow removal operations is down. It just delays things for our workers and to get that airfield back open. The project itself is estimated at $230,000 with $218,500 coming from grants from Mastah and Aeronautics and the FAA. $1,500 would be the airport's share. Thank you.
Thank you. We are in a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none. Counselors, could I please get a motion to close the public hearing? I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for 2019-106, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll flip it over to the clerk for a vote.
Counselors. Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levec?
Yes.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
That's eleven yes.
Thank you very much. Counsel Levesque, could I get you for two, please? Start with 2019-107.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business Public Hearing Roll Call Vote. This is item number 2019-107 Airport Enterprise Fund Capital Improvement Plan Appropriation and Loan Order in the Amount of $280,000. Be appropriated for the purpose of funding the airport's main terminal ramp handstands for the heavy aircraft parking as outlined in the Fiscal Year 2020/Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor going into a public hearing for 2019-107, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition or abstention? Hearing none. We're in the public hearing, and rationale, please.
Great, thank you. Heavy aircraft have caused some depressions in our pavement on the main ramp. The depressions noticed on the ramp have created low points where they're creating bird baths and wet spots to be on the ramp itself. We don't want ponding water. We don't want tripping hazards. We don't want our pavement to fail, but unfortunately, this main ramp is seeing some pavement failure because of mainly the JetBlue aircraft that comes in. Other airports in the region are experiencing the same issues, and it appears to be linked to poor pavement design. It could be a possible misinterpretation of the FAA's pavement design standards, so we will be looking into that and looking into funding for that because that pavement is really not that old. So we'll be working with Nantucket and the Vineyard who has experienced the same problems. This picture, although it's hard to see, but you can just barely see the indentations from the main gear of the JetBlue aircraft that have caused, although it doesn't look that drastic from this photograph, if you're out there, standing out there, it is definitely a tripping hazard for any of our staff that's out on that main ramp. The project itself is eligible for FAA and/or Mastar funds. The project is estimated at $280,000 for the fix, with $56,000 coming from the airport's enterprise fund and $224,000 from Mastar and/or the FAA for grant funds. But like I said, we will be looking at how it was designed by our engineer and move forward in that grain as well. However, we do need to take care of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our rationale for 2019-107. This is a public hearing. Any of the public wish to come forward? Hearing none. I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing. And a second. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for 2019-107, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Any questions? Yes, Counselor Hebert.
Thank you. So I have to say, thank God for the FAA and MDOT for Mastar because of the money that they're providing, and all these slides are saying that if we don't get this work done, we might be subject to decertification.
Correct.
Are we on some kind of a priority list because of the fact we are a regional airport that's so close to the regional hospital?
We are on a priority list based on the FAA, just about the type of activity that we have and the air carrier activity that we have at the airport. So for the region, we're in priority, just as Nantucket would be and Montez Vineyard, because of the type of service that they provide to the region. So we are a priority airport. Because of the fact that we have passenger activity at the airport, we do receive more funding on an annual basis for the federal appropriation than other airports, say, like Taunton Airport or some of the smaller airports within the state.
So when we do, when these presentations talk about decertification, do we ever come close because of the funding not coming from the feds or Mast D O T, that would that prevent us from, what would happen to us?
So I wouldn't say that we become close. I think what happens is if we do not get replacement vehicles for us to enable us to do our job according to FAA criteria, then therefore, we're not able to fulfill our obligations as part of the certification. So if we get into that situation and we do not have, let's just say, firefighting vehicles that can respond to an incident as mandated by the FAA, then that could be a situation where they would say, you're not fulfilling your requirements of your certification. So when I say that there is concern of decertification, if we don't have the equipment to be able to respond to an incident or the equipment to be able to make sure that the runways and taxways are clear of snow, then we're not meeting our obligations to be open to the public and to serve the public. And that's what the FAA deems 139 certificate to be able to do. So they do provide funding for these types of equipment because they know that we're trying to, we're trying to respond to our obligations. So that's the higher priority for those types of projects.
So they wouldn't necessarily penalize us immediately? If they looked at we're working at maintaining the highest level, we'd get some grace for that?
Correct.
All within the public safety?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Beedenbender.
So just to follow up to that, and if you, it was explained and I missed it, I apologize. But it almost seems like a catch-22 that, so is there a scenario where this equipment that we're trying to replace so that we maintain certification, if all of a sudden something else happens at another airport and the FAA decides that that's more of a priority, that you would, they would rescind the funding for that piece of equipment like they've done in the past, and could that put us in the position now where we could lose our certification?
They could rescind it. I think that if we were at a point where we felt that we weren't going to be able to meet our obligations, we would have a conversation with the FAA to say, you know, this has been rescinded for several years, and we're getting to a point that we're not going to be able to maintain this equipment. And that would put it on a higher priority for the FAA.
Counselors? Yes, Counselor Neary?
Service, just a question, kind of piggybacking on what Counselor Beedenbender said. So these vehicle purchases and this ramp work, would it be safe to say that the money's in the bank now, or should all of these be approved, who have been?
So.
Can the trigger be pulled, so to speak?
Right. So we have had our meetings with the FAA. We've identified all the 10 projects and the projects that you're listed here tonight on their capital improvement plan. So they've already scheduled us for those projects. If at any point in time they do decide to pull one of those projects because something has happened within the region or they have another higher priority project, then we will not go forward with the project. So if, for instance, $800,000 project for that snow blower is not available, that's something that the airport will continue trying to maintain that piece of equipment because we'd rather have the 95% funding from the FAA and Mastar to be able to purchase that.
That's a great deal for those two vehicles for the amount of money.
I agree.
Just on the ramp, the question that I have, it's 280,000. The picture obviously doesn't, doesn't show well. How big an area needs to be worked? I mean, like dimensionally, is it, is it 100 feet? Is it 500 feet? How big an area is that?
No, so that's probably, would you say, about 20 feet long, about 20 feet long of a concrete pad, probably 20 feet by four feet, five feet is what we'd probably put in there to rectify that.
So the engineering part of it, it's pretty expensive, whatever is going under and around. I'm just, I mean, it looks like they're picking up 75% of the cost anyways, but it's not a cheap fix for not a big area, I guess.
Right, and I think the main concern for us is that we just, we want to continue having JetBlue come to the airport. So we want to make sure that from a safety standpoint, there's no issues with the ramp where they're parking. So for us, to be able to do that, to maintain that consistency for JetBlue, that's important to us so that they continue to come to an airport that's in good condition for them.
I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors? Yes, Counselor Hebert.
Thank you. So when we have been seeing these red rescind, is it, our airport, is it you that rescinded it, or was it the FAA and Mastar? They rescinded the amount of money or the grant that they could give us at this time, or is it us that decides, you decide that?
It depends on the project. So for some of the projects, I do have more detail that I can provide you, but for some of the projects, they were rescinded because we did not have the matching share. Some of the projects were moved by the FAA, but I'd have to go through each one to tell you exactly which ones were moved by the FAA from one year to the next. But I can provide that to you.
Again, I know that you're really on top of it, but, so let's just suppose, when you say we didn't, you didn't have the funding, was that because it was not part of a capital project, or could you, if you decided it was pretty serious and the FAA did have the money, but we didn't have the matching fund, we could dip into our enterprise fund, correct?
Correct. So if you remember from last year, we ended up, last year and the year prior, we had to take money from our enterprise fund. So when we had to do that, we looked at all of our capital improvement plans and decided which ones we were not going to move forward with because of the amount of money that we had to borrow basically from our reserves. So some of those projects and the deferment was associated with us just not feeling comfortable with dipping into the reserves even more.
Okay, thank you.
I would point out the fact that they preserved the reserves, gave them an opportunity to win some FAA money this year as well. So the reserve issue has been ongoing by this council. Any other questions? Hearing none. I turn it over to the clerk.
Counselors. Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley. Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender. Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
That's eleven yes.
Thank you. Counselor Levesque, 219-108.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Old Business Public Hearing Roll Call Vote. Item number 2019-108 Airport Enterprise Fund Capital Improvement Plan Appropriation and Loan Order in the Amount of $475,000 for the Purpose of Funding the Airport's Runway. 15-33 Surface Treatment and Repainting Project as outlined in the Fiscal Year 2020/Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor going into a public hearing, 2019-108, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. We're in the public hearing process, and please with the rationale.
Thank you. Due to a number of unforeseen challenges when we were working on our runway 1533 project in 2017, and those challenges were additional earthwork that were needed for the side safety area of the runways and the taxiways, and additional pavement that was needed, we basically ran out of funds for that project. One of the things that we ended up doing is we removed this particular item, which is a P608 surface treatment for the new pavement and then repainting that pavement after the surface treatment was put on. The surface treatment is really a pavement rejuvenator. What it does is it just extends the life of pavement. We've installed this type of product on a number of our surfaces just to help bring those surfaces beyond their 20-year life and to just keep maintaining the area that we have, and we have vast amount of pavement at the airport, so maintaining it, and this surface treatment definitely helps. This is a photograph of the P608 surface treatment that was put on our taxiway. On the right-hand side is Taxiway Charlie, which was completed in 2016, and on the left was a project for Taxiway Echo, again, with that surface treatment that was installed. This is eligible for FAA funds as well as Mastar funds. They do want to see that we're doing everything that we possibly can to enhance the life of our pavements at our airports. The project is estimated at $475,000 with $451,250 coming from state and federal grants. The airport share would be just over $23,000. Thank you.
Thank you for that rationale. We are in a public hearing for 2019-108, and any of the public wish to come forward and be heard on this matter? Hearing none. I'd take a motion to close 2019-108 public hearing portion. First and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, any questions? Hearing none. I turn it over to the clerk. Does your clerk again? The clerk for a vote. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you two-for-one here shortly.
I don't think so. (laughing). Counselors. Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
That's eleven yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Neary, could you take us for two? 2019-109, please.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move item 2019-109. It's Old Business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call vote. It's Airport Enterprise Fund Capital Improvement Plan Appropriation and Loan Order in the Amount of $1 million for the Purpose of Funding the Airport's repairs to the access road on the east side of the airfield, including drainage and utilities, as outlined in the Fiscal Year 2020 through Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a first and a second to go into the public hearing for 2019-109. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none. We're in the public portion, and I'm looking for a rationale, please.
Thank you. Due to existing budgetary constraints that this town council has been privy to over the past couple of years, you have heard me indicate that we are going, we're doing an airport business plan, or we've completed a business plan for the airport that identifies marketing and business opportunities for the airport moving forward. The goals include maximizing general aviation activity at the airport, diversifying our revenue stream, being a regional leader in air transportation, and enhancing the airport's image and branding. As part of the maximizing of the general aviation activity, this extension of Mary Dunway, it has always been a top priority for the airport. In fact, we do have plans, engineered plans that are completed. We have permits for the project, and it's been sitting on a shelf for the past several years. The project itself is really a two-phased approach. The first phase is that yellow portion that you see there, which is really the existing road that we have in place now. It does need improvements. The reason why we would like to make improvements to that road is so that we can enhance and have further development, want to locate on the east side of the access road. And to be honest with you, the road is in poor condition. It looks, it looks poor. It's not an inviting entrance to the east side of our airport, and we want to change that image for the airport to welcome people to come and to want to develop their hangars at this airport and develop their businesses at this airport. With that in mind, I have been working with the town of Barnstable to seek alternative funding sources. I would like to coincide this with grants that the town is already looking into to, for instance, the town is looking at improvements to Yarmouth Road. They're looking for grants for those improvements for Yarmouth Road. There are mass work grants, mass works grants that are eligible, that we're eligible for, but I want to make sure that I do this smartly with the town of Barnstable because there are other plans that the town has for mass work, mass works grants as well. So I just want to make sure that we're all marching to the same drum and that we're working on this collectively together. So I did have meetings with DPW already about our plans for this road, and we have future meetings set up with the Planning and Development Department to make sure we're on the same page. The project itself is not eligible, typically not eligible for FAA or Mastar funds, so I don't want to anticipate for that eligibility at all. So right now, we have this money coming from the Airport Enterprise Fund. However, I will be seeking grants to be able to offset that dollar amount that's coming from the airport's reserves. Thank you.
That is the rationale for 2019-109. We're in a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Hearing none. I'd call to close the public hearing portion. And a second, thank you. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion, signify by saying aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, any questions? Yes, Counselor Schnep.
Just a clarification. In our CIP book, it did indicate that reimbursable funding was available, but that, was that just a Scrivener's error or something?
Yeah, right now, that is not a project that typically FAA or Mastar will participate in, so that may have been an error, and I'm sorry for that.
Oh, no problem. You know, you mentioned that the desire is to improve general aviation services. What, how do you increase demand? I mean, are you taking flights away from other airports, or how do you actually make that something appealing?
Sure. So when we talk about increasing general aviation activity, general aviation also includes the corporate traffic that we have at the airport, as well as those smaller types of aircraft where it's a four-passenger or two-passenger aircraft that, you know, just recreational flyers. When September 11th happened, the airport had to institute security regulations for the field, and so when that happened, we did lose a lot of our recreational traffic. There has been a desire by our aviation community to enhance what we can offer our GA community. There has been a desire of clubs, opening up clubs at the airport, recreational flying clubs at the airport. Many folks have reached out to Matt in order to do that. We just initially opened up a brand-new chapter of the Experimental Aircraft Association, which is a small recreational flyers of experimental aircraft, and we just opened a chapter at Hyannis due to a lot of work that Matt has done. So that is our ability to bring that type of activity back to the airport, and it really, you know, there's a lot of people that want to come to Hyannis. They want to be able to fly into the airport and to go to. They want to be able to fly into the airport and to go to those community events that we have in Hyannis, and this would open up the doors to allow for that type of activity and to have that synergy between what's happening in the town and what's happening at the airport.
Any other council questions? Just Councilor Tinsley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry about that noise. Just to kind of piggyback in here, actually, in the book, it mentions that the FAA and Mast Dot aeronautics is just for the security fence, but for the road construction, it mentions Mast Dot ASMP. What's that? I just didn't know what that was.
Sure. ASMP is the Airport Safety and Maintenance Program. So you may remember from last year and just recently, we were able to receive funds from Mast Dot through that program for a number of projects that normally we wouldn't have received funding for. So because this is a project that normally we wouldn't receive funding for, trust me, I'm asking Mast Dot every day to be able to fund it, but it's not something typical, so I don't want to identify that it would be. The security fence, yes, that is something that they will participate in, but the road itself, no.
Counselors? Yes, Councilor Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just as a clarification, so the funding for this, will it come from the enterprise fund? Is that what we'll be paying for this?
It would come from the enterprise fund unless we can get grants, other types of grants.
Okay, and what is the balance now in that enterprise fund?
3.5 million is where we're at right now, and of course, that will get certified again in July of this year.
So it's, this is a pretty good chunk, portion of what's remaining in that fund?
Right, and if I have to wait until the timing is right to receive grants, then I'll continue to push just to receive grants. I just wanted to have the dollar amount in there and the project in there in case something did shake loose and we were able to move forward with the project.
Almost like a shovel-ready project that we have in town.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselors? Yes, Councilor Rap Grissette?
Just to follow up on Councilor Neary's point, I was gonna ask, actually, on your last appropriation, after all these projects that you're bringing before us are, you know, approved, provided pending reimbursement from Mast Dot and FAA, what will be in the reserves?
So the, all of the 10 projects that I'm presenting to you tonight, the airport share is just over 450,000 for the airport share, and that's not including this million-dollar project. So the, all the other projects are 450,000. So it would be 1,450,000 if we were to move forward on this project. I'm, I would prefer, to be honest with you, to get grants for this type of project, and I will hold off if I have to.
I would hope you'd be nothing but honest with us. So that brings you down to 2 million. What's your cutoff on the reserves? Do you have a drop dead number?
Typically, we want to stay within 2 and 2.5 million for our reserves. So right now, we're 3.5 million, and then we do get reimbursed for some of these projects, but that would reduce us down to about 3, just over 3 million.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. President. But in the, in the rationale here, what it's talking about is the town, the sale of bonds or notes. I'm not seeing enterprise fund here, so if we were successful with the bonds and the notes, it would not necessarily be coming from enterprise. Am I correct?
That's correct.
I'm looking at Mr. Mill because...
Mr. Mill works on all these articles, as you know, so we'll ask Mr. Mill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Yes, this, if this project were to move forward and we, if we were unsuccessful in getting the grants, we would actually borrow this million dollars. We wouldn't take it out of the reserve, so we would issue a multi-year bond, and then the annual debt service payment would come out of the Airport Enterprise Fund. So it wouldn't hit the reserve fund directly.
And that's why I feel, I felt comfortable with that because I was looking at that. So when you, when you mentioned enterprise fund, I didn't think we were going there, and I actually didn't see enterprise fund in this write-up, so that's, but thank you. Very comfortable, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would ask one question. I saw clearly, and I applaud you for looking at drainage and repairs to sewer.
Yes.
Any look, see at shortcuts for the water district or the water company?
I've already spoken to them. They are looking at using that road basically to put a new water line.
Yeah, terrific.
Down that road, and that's a win-win for the airport and for the town.
Yes, and we have your understanding that if that's their choice, you will wait with the program so that not everybody cuts the road or pays twice.
Yes, we will.
Thank you, that's great cooperation. Any further questions? Hearing none, I turn it to the clerk for a vote.
Counselors. Levesque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagewan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
It's 11 yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Neary, 2019-110, please.
Yes, Mr. President. This is all business, to refer to public hearing and requires a majority vote. It's item number 2019-110 Airport Enterprise Fund Capital Improvement Plan. It's an appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of funding the airport's perfluoroctane sulfonate, or PFOS mitigation project, as outlined in the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a motion, a first and a second, to go into the public, am I correct? To go into the public hearing portion of this? All those in favor of having a public hearing on 2019-110 signify by saying aye. Opposition or abstentions? Hearing none, we're in the public portion, and I'm looking for a rationale, please.
Great, thank you. As you're aware, in 2016, the airport had a request for information that was issued by Mast DEP following the detection of PFOS and PFOA in samples collected from public water supplies. That's been in the news, everybody is fully aware of what's happening with PFOS. The RFI identifies aqueous film-forming foam, which is the agent that we use to fight fires at the airport, as being the source of PFOS, a potential source of PFOS, and the basis for the RFI and the request for information. So since 2016, the airport has collected a number of soil and water samples, measuring the levels of these substances within the water and soil samples at different locations around the airport. We've been very responsive to DEP's request for information. We've been working with Dan Santos. He is in the loop with what the airport is doing in terms of testing the soils at the airport. This project is to put money aside to excavate those soils and to replace it with new material once we, basically, once the soils, once we define the soil area. So right now, we have two locations on the airport that have been used in the past for drills that the airport has done in past years, not recent past years, but in long-term past years, and then just testing of the foam that we've had to do to meet FAA requirements. Every year, we were required to test the foam. One of the things that we did purchase, and that you approved several years ago, was the purchase of a unit that keeps the foam inside of this unit. It's not deployed onto the airfield when we have to run our test to satisfy FAA criteria. So that was a big win for us to be able to get this cart that we use at the airport that enables us not to have to deploy that foam on the ground needlessly. The project itself is all airport-funded. It's $100,000 that we anticipate needing for the soil's replacement. Thank you.
We're in the public hearing portion of 2019-110. Anyone from the public wish to speak to the issue? Hearing none. Counselors, could I get a motion to leave the public process? I have a first and a second, thank you very much. Everybody in favor of closing the public hearing for 2019-110 signify by saying aye. Any opposition, any abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, what's your decisions? Yes, Councilor Hebert.
So two questions, if I could. Do we continue to use that foam? Is there an alternative to using the foam? And if there is, are we going to use it, and maybe there isn't?
Right now, the FAA is looking at alternatives, but right now, we do not have another alternative to use. So this is the approved foam that we can use according to the FAA, and they are working on alternatives as well. But this is the only option we have.
And the foam is only used to fight a fire on an aircraft?
Correct, correct. So any of our drills that we have done at the airport, we use water only. Any of the testing that we have to do on the annual basis of the foam, the testing that we have to do is just to determine if the correct proportionment between water and foam is being delivered by our rescue vehicles, and we can do that through this internal cart system that we have, so we no longer need to deploy foam on the ground.
So how, in the testing that was done, you determined that the concentrations of the chemical is within a very small area relative? For $100,000, you're doing a lot.
Correct. There's two areas that the airport historically had used for either MCI, for drills, or for testing for that annual basis. One is a very small patch of grass that's located right in front of our maintenance and fire rescue building. The other location is a very small area on the airport that was used for drills. So they're small areas, but we're defining what those areas are by taking different types of soil samples and water samples around those sites.
So do you still feel, then, that it was sufficient, that it contributed to the Ma wells being contaminated or not?
I wouldn't be able to answer that. So right now, all I'm responding to is what is in our existing soils. Whether or not it has contributed to the Ma River wells, we don't have that answer yet.
Am I being reasonable to ask that DPW might be able to conclude whether or not that was affected by the airport or not?
I don't think at this time.
Do we, yes, we are fortunate to have a director of DPW.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan Santos.
Yeah, so there is PFOS in the groundwater at the Ma River well field, as you know, because we've had to shut down those wells, and we're putting a treatment plant in there. Right now, we don't know what the source of that PFOS is. It's been found at the airport in the groundwater, but the issue that we're really trying to figure out is at what depth. So we're finding PFOS very deep in the groundwater, and if it was applied at the airport, it would unlikely be that deep. So the other source, obviously, that we've been working with is the Fire Training Academy, and we've looked at that, and there's been some modeling that suggests that it could be that deep from that source. So there's nothing conclusive yet, as Katie said, and that we're looking at that to try to identify what the source is, but we're not, we're not sure. But yes, there is PFOS in the groundwater in that area, and it is in the wells, and we're addressing that through our treatment plant that we're just completing the design on.
I thank you for two things. One, having the competence to have done this study correctly, and that we're not jumping to conclusions that you're studying what caused what, and we're not just jumping to. So thanks, Dan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Beeden Bender.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, how are the contaminated soils disposed of?
At this point in time, we would, we have talked to DEP about where we would bring those types of soils.
So DEP manages it?
Yes, they are aware of some landfills that actually will take those soils, so we haven't identified an exact location of where we would put it, but we would work through that with DEP to find out where we would put that soil.
Thank you. And one additional question. So, you know, you're, you know, in your training, you're making sure that you're containing it, and there's no risks to the soil, but in the very, hopefully would never happen, but in the unfortunate incident where a situation occurs where it does have to be deployed, and now you have all this foam everywhere, what is the cleanup process? Is that, that must be a full-blown hazmat team that comes in, or how do you mitigate that from getting into our aquifer?
Sure, that's a great question. We do have containment equipment onboard all of our fire rescue vehicles, as well as our maintenance trucks and our fuel vehicles. So if there were an accident similar to the accident that occurred several summers ago where we had a small four-passenger aircraft that crashed into the parking lot next to the airport, that foam that was sprayed on that aircraft was all contained. As soon as our firefighters got there, they had other firefighters that were with them, and they put out containment blankets, and they covered catchment basins so that that foam did not go into any of those catchment areas.
Counselors, any further questions? This is a majority vote. Hearing no further questions, I'd call the vote. All those in favor of 2019-110 as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. I am on to Councilor Dagewan, please, 2019-111. I'll need you for two, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 2019-111 appropriation and loan order in the amount of $165,000 for the purpose of funding the airport's replacement of airfield mowing equipment as outlined in the fiscal year 2020, fiscal 2024 Capital Improvement Plan, and this is subject to a public hearing and roll call with a two-thirds vote.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of 2019-111 as opening for a public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we're in the public meeting, and I'd look for a rationale, please.
Great, thank you. Outside of the paved surfaces that we have at the airport, we have over 600 acres of trees, grass, and shrubs that we need to maintain, one for wildlife hazard management purposes, and the other is to maintain our secure fence line. This project is to replace a 19-year-old tractor and mower deck with a new tractor and rear mower deck to perform the similar tasks. This is a photograph of our existing tractor that we do have. We have some rust, you know, that you would see with a 19-year-old piece of equipment. Similar to other pieces of equipment, we typically trade this piece of equipment in when we're getting a new one. I have been contacted by other folks within the town to see about treating this as surplus equipment so that it can go to Marston Mills Airport if they potentially need it, and we will certainly look into that.
Thank you. Thank you for the rationale.
Thank you.
Any public wish to speak to this matter? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion. First and a second, please. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion of 2019-111, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. Counselors, what's the question? Hearing none, I throw it to the clerk for a vote.
Counselors. Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagewan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
11 yes.
Thank you very much. Councilor Dagewan, please, 2019-112.
I'm still under all business. Item 2019-112 appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of funding the airport replacement of the steel I-beam in the airport-owned hangar project as outlined in the fiscal year 2020 and year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. This is also subject to a public hearing, but I just aim at a majority vote.
Thank you. I'm looking for a vote to open the public hearing portion of 2019-112 as written. I have a first and a second, please. Second, thank you. All those in favor of going into the public hearing for 2019-112? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Thank you, we're in the public hearing. Could I get a rationale?
Sure, thank you. This is the airport's sole municipally-owned aircraft teehanger. It's for small and general aviation aircraft. It was built in 1957. It has had its roof repaired and the skin of the building repaired throughout the years. The steel I-beams that support the building and the roof structure are rusting, and they need replacement. The rental income from this hangar is just over $35,000 annually. If we were to tear down this facility and put in a new facility, the cost of a new facility would be anywhere from $600,000 to $750,000. We thought that it was more appropriate to see if we can, since the skin of the hangar is good, the roof is good, we thought it would be more appropriate to just replace the I-beams. So, that's what the project is for. This is a picture of the aircraft-owned T-hanger, so you can see it's in pretty decent condition. The cost of the project was estimated $100,000. That is not something that is typically funded through FAA or Mast dot, so that would be all borne on the airport. Thank you.
Thank you for the rationale. We're in the public portion. Anyone like to speak from the public for 2019-112? Please come forward. Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public portion of 2019-112. I have a first and a second. Thank you very much. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Counselors, what's your questions? 112. Hearing none, it's a majority vote. I would call for a vote. All those in favor of 2019-112 as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record it as unanimous. I am on to Counsel Tinsley again. Counsel Tinsley, 119-113, and I'd ask you to help me with two, please. The last two in the airport, I might add.
Thank you. I think we're, no, we're done.
Oh, I apologize. Yes.
I think we are done.
They are done. Thank you, Counsel Tinsley, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Here we go. Is my mic on? Thank you. Hi, Dan.
There we go. My name is Stan Wood. I'm the IT Director for the town. Next to me is Jim Benoit. He's our GIS Coordinator. He's also the author of the two CIP projects before you for Flyover. Jim's going to give you a brief description, and then we'll take questions from you.
First, Jim, I'd like to open the meeting, please. Counsel Tinsley.
Okay, old business, open to a public hearing. Item number 2019-113, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of funding the aerial flyover and mapping update project as outlined in the FY 2020/FY 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a first and a second to open the public hearing, and I would welcome our professional gentlemen from above, informational services. And we're on 219-113, and could I get a description or rationale, please, Jim?
The purpose of this project is to update the base maps that are in the town's geographic information system. This project would update what we call the GIS base map, which really forms the foundation for everything in the GIS. This particular project would update over 40 different types of map features, things like buildings, roads, parking lots, fences, utility poles, topography, pretty much everything, anything you can see on a aerial photograph, any physical features. The project would also produce new digital aerial photographs that are very high resolution, very high accuracy. And these maps are really used by pretty much every town department and division in some way or another, everything from water quality planning to public safety, infrastructure management, planning, economic development, natural resource management. Historically, we've updated these maps about every six years or so, going back to 1989. Our last update was done in 2014, and the maps are beginning to become somewhat outdated. So, this project would fund a new update of these maps to occur in the spring of 2020.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the rationale. We're on a public hearing, 2019-113. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion of our meeting. Second as well, I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for 2019-113, please? Signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, any questions? Yes, Counsel Tinsley.
Thank you. I've actually been waiting for this particular, these two items right here. As a new counselor, I got a nice tour of, and got to see a lot of maps and GIS, and it's just something I'm interested in personally. My question here is, have we ever considered, or have you looked into LiDAR pictures for the town? Because I read a really neat pamphlet article, whatever you want to call it, from NOAA about that specific thing, using LiDAR maps for GIS purposes. So, just wondering if we've looked into that, or maybe that's a future item.
Yeah, actually, in the 2014 Flyover, we did LiDAR as part of that. That's where the topo comes from, but we also have the raw LiDAR images. You can sort of do some 3D stuff with that. So, we have done it. Ideally, yeah.
You could hit the mic too, if you would. Yeah, so, thank you for the follow-up. And, just so we're clear, you are not a new counselor. So, when you were a new counselor is when you had that tour? Okay. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service, Counsel Tinsley. Yes, Counsel Beedenbender.
So, based on our CIP book, in there, it talked about the, how was previously in 2014, we did this in partnership with the commission, and that helped to defray a fair amount of the costs. And the way it's written in the CIP book is, it's unclear to me if the $100,000 is what it would cost us if we go it alone, or if it's, that's our portion if we go with the Cape Cod Commission. And so, that's sort of the first question, and then depending on what your answer is, I might have a follow-up.
The regional project is still possibly in the works. There's nothing definite about it, so we're kind of proceeding as if we had to do it on our own. So, this amount would be as if we were doing it on our own.
No follow-up at this time. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Counsel Schnep.
Just a question. Is drone technology ever used for this process?
We did use that for a small area in the Barnstable Harbor Aquaculture Grant Area. It's good for small things. The town-wide, at this point, it's not really practical to do.
Hearing no other questions, I turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Schnep.
Yes.
Steinhilde.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
That's 11 yes.
Thank you very much. Counsel Tinsley, if you could help me again, please. 2019-114.
Through you, Mr. President. Open to a public hearing. Item number 2019-114, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose of funding the summer aerial flyover of waterways project as outlined in the FY 2020/FY 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
Thank you very much. I have a first and a second to go into a public hearing portion of 2019-114 as written. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none, we're in the portion of the public portion. I'd accept a rationale, please.
Okay, this project is to obtain new summertime aerial photos, which primarily are used for managing the town's coastal and inland waterways. Things like mooring fields, shellfish aquaculture grants, wetlands, dock and piers, and navigation channels and buoys. This is sort of similar to the prior project, but it is different. It has different requirements. This project has a summer timeframe requirement, where a lot of the items we're trying to capture, like docks and mooring fields are just, if you took the photograph in the winter, you wouldn't see anything. There wouldn't be anything there. So, we need to wait till the summer to take this, whereas the other project has to be taken in the early spring, where there's, before the leaves are on the trees, so you can see items on the ground. Also, with this project, there's very strict tide and wind conditions. It's got to be within an hour and a half of low tide, so you can see things like channels and things below the water. And low wind restriction and early morning timeframe, both to minimize glare, if there's any kind of waves or anything that would interfere with our visibility, what we can see in the photograph. So, they are very different. They can't really occur at the same time. That's why we have two different projects here. We've updated this about every five to six years, going back to 1996. The last update was 2015, and this project would also occur in 2020 during the summer.
Thank you for the rationale. We are in the open public hearing portion of 2019-114. Is there any public would like to speak to the issue? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion. I have a first, I have a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing of 2019-114, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? I have a, no opposition, no abstentions. Okay. We're on to the questions of the council. Rap Grissette, Counsel Rap Grissette.
Thank you. I love your department, and thank you for providing me with maps when I request them. And are you going to have any help this summer in your department? I know you've used interns in the past. Do you have one scheduled?
Yeah, I think we have at least one intern we're going to have.
I was noticing on, I can't remember, I think it was Conservation Commissioner, somebody was using a locust map. It was an old locust map, showing a spit-off of Oregon Beach that hasn't been there in I don't know how many years. So, do you, so departments utilize these maps on a regular basis. I think maybe it's Conservation that should update those maps that they use, their locust maps, but certainly I will support this, but thank you for your great service.
Any other questions? Counsel Dagwan.
Yes, who does the flyover, and how long does it take? What's the framing work in terms of the time to do this?
It's contracted out. There's a company we've used called Samborn in the past, but there are different companies. We've used different companies. It would go through an RFP process. Once the vendor was selected, it would, they'd wait for a particular window of weather mainly, so they might be standing by for a period of, you know, weeks, but probably between beginning of July and maybe early September would be when it would occur, depending on the weather and tide.
So, I mean, this would take them an hour, two hours to do the?
Probably a few, several hours. Yeah, half a day, maybe.
Okay.
Hearing no further questions? I would turn it over to the clerk for a vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry, would you like to be heard? We got that tough vote coming shortly, Counsel Tinsley. You save your strength. Clerk, please.
Counselors. Steinhilde.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
That's 11 yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have some good news for the council and for people at home. I seem to have an agreement that we will go to Unit 129, which gets us through 30 of the 57 units tonight, and that's not bad. And I am going to flip forward, if I may, with Counsel Hebert to page 65, which is 219-159, which is old business we must act on. And then we'll go into, start in the DPW, and if you want, we'll take a short break and then go for the last units with DPW for the evening. Counsel Hebert, I'm on page 65, 219-159, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a second reading and may be acted upon for item number 2019-159, acceptance of a sidewalk easement for 80. Preservation Way, Hyannis, Massachusetts.
I have a first and a second to have a second reading on it, and would you like to speak to it?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Dan.
In 2018, the town was awarded a Mastworks Infrastructure Program grant in the amount of $3.75 million. This grant will make critical upgrades to two existing intersections, extend public utilities, and improve pedestrian connectivity in Hyannis's major commercial center. The public infrastructure project will alleviate existing traffic congestion and mitigate future congestion by promoting multimodal transportation options. A minimum of six-foot-wide sidewalks will be installed within this project area to provide this adequate sidewalk width and easement at 80. Perseverance Way is required, this property of Butts Addicts Lane where the sidewalk will be located. Acceptance of this easement is critical to the construction for the Mastworks project with Independence Park. There is no cost for this easement.
Thank you for the rationale. There is no public hearing on this one, folks, so any questions of this issue? Hearing none, I'll call the vote for 2019-159 as read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Please record that as unanimous. Counsel Hebert, we're going to take this other one, and then we clean up as far as we can the other way.
Sec.
Oh, actually, I'll go to Counsel Rap Grissette, because we have appointments. Counsel Rap Grissette, page 67, 219-160, please.
This is item 2019-160, appointments to a board committee or commission resolved that the town council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board committee or commission, Infrastructure and Energy Committee. Derek Vanier for Marston's Mills is a regular member to a term expiring 6/2021. Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee. Melanie Powers, Marston's Mills, is a regular member to a term expiring 6/2019. This is a second reading and may be acted upon.
Second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of the appointments as read in on 219-160, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Please record that as passing. Counselors, we have an agreement to end the night on page 43, which is number 129 of the evening. We could take a two-minute break here, if you want, and stretch your legs, and then we can go at it with Mr. Santos, our Director of Public Works. Yeah, yeah. So, if we're all in favor of that, I'd take the vote first to go past 11, and I'd give us a two-minute recess to stretch, if that's okay with you guys.
With the, with the Chair, with the President, I noticed that we have, I think there's only two items for the community center, and I think the staff has been here pretty much all night. I'm wondering if we could just add those two items, if the council would indulge me in helping them out.
Terrific, we'll try that. I ask that everybody be dismissed who isn't on by 129, so that that wouldn't happen. So, whatever you want to do, if you want to move some up from the back, or just please make a motion.
The first two. Yeah, oh, okay, okay.
We're just going to take a two-minute break, so everybody can stretch.
Okay, I just saw that.
But after a vote to go past 11, so that if you guys sneak off, I can still help.
The only reason I asked is I saw Director Santos was already sitting in the chair, so I thought.
He's going to run through them all.
Oh, you do, yeah. Thank you.
He's got backup if he needs it. We're in good shape here tonight. So, first, I'll take the motion to continue past 11 o'clock. I got a first, do I have a second? All those in favor of continuing our work past 11 o'clock, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
None.
Any abstentions? Please record the opposition by Council Tinsley. Thank you very much. I would take a two-minute recess, and I'll call you back to order in about two minutes. Thank you. Councilors, the time has arrived. Madam Clerk, could you call roll for me, please?
Okay. Councilors, Beeden Bender. My glasses on. Crocker?
Here.
Dagwan?
Here.
Rap Grissette?
Present.
Hebert?
Present.
Levek? Neary?
Here.
Schnep?
Here.
Stein Hilber?
Here.
Tinsley? And Wallace?
Yep.
So, we're at 11. We just... We just made quorum at nine.
Fucked off, so I'm afraid I'm not really... They'll be right with us. Thank you. All right. Please record. Council Levek has joined us, so that's 10 at this point. How are you, Dan Santos, Director of DPW?
Never better.
Thank you. 2019-115. Thank you. Where am I? Oh, it's Hebert again, if I may. Council Hebert, would you continue with me for 219-115 and 116, please?
What is that, page number, please?
Page number 29.
Thank you. Open for a public hearing, roll call required. Item number 2019-115, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $679,000 for the purpose of funding the Hyannis Youth and Community Center roof, HVAC controls, parking, and security improvement project as outlined in the fiscal year 2020-fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor of opening the public hearing on 2019-115 as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? I'll take a rationale, please.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to present the next several projects. Just a small point is that you'll see my co-pilot change throughout as we go through this, depending on the subject matter. But I'll be presenting all of the rationale, and my co-pilot will vary depending on the functional area. And at this point, it's Mark Marinaccio, Town Architect, is with me. This appropriation order combines projects HYCC 20-1 and HYCC 20-2 that can be found on pages 99 through 102 in the CIP book. The Department of Public Works took over maintenance responsibilities at the Hyannis Youth and Community Center in October 2016. The facility was plagued with system failures due to deferred maintenance. DPW commissioned a facility condition assessment to develop a multi-year capital equipment improvement plan. This year's projects have been developed based on the facility condition assessment that was completed in 2018. In the fiscal 2019 capital improvement budget, funds were appropriated for the investigation and design of the roof system, which has been plagued with leaks for a number of years. The roof system is an amalgam of styles and types, including flattened pitched, metal roofing, rubber membrane, and asphalt shingle. We also intend to investigate enhancing the roof structure in order to accommodate solar panels, which it has previously been determined that the existing roof system cannot support. And I swear that was in my remarks. Written right there. This project... This year's projects have been developed... I'm sorry. I've lost my place. This project will fund repairs to the roofing system that are being identified during ongoing investigations. After 12 years of hard use, the building is in need of a number of additional upgrades and improvements. These include upgrades to the HVAC control system in order to address historical efficiency ineffectiveness and heating-cooling balance issues within the building. Some parking area improvements and reconfigurations will address American with Disabilities Act accessibility and compliance issues at the facility. We will be designing and constructing a new, secure office for police personnel at the HYCC. Currently, police are stationed in a room in the center of the facility next to the entrance. This location has no monitoring capabilities and does not have a separate entrance. If a security incident occurs at the facility, responding personnel would not be able to access video and security feeds without entering the main entrance and moving to the center of the building. This project will create a monitoring station that is a secure, private entrance that cannot be seen from the front of the building. Monitors for all rooms and outdoor cameras will be set up in the new security office along with the ability to lock the entire facility down. Additionally, there will be equipment that will allow police to communicate with each room in the facility. Thank you.
Thank you for that rationale. We're in a public hearing for 2019-115. Is there any public who'd like to address us? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public portion of the hearing. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. Councilors, questions? Yes, Council Beeden Bender?
Just out of curiosity, who originally maintained it before DPW took it over?
Well, the HYCC did... Was responsible for the maintenance, either through their maintenance that they had at the facility or doing contracting separately, or... And they would sometimes use DPW. But we now own the facility, and that was at the direction of the town manager several years ago.
Great. Thanks.
Yes, Council Neary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just... I've been chided by my fellow councilors that it's not dovetailed, the thing on the edge of the paper.
Dog-eared.
It's a dog-eared. So, I just want to put that on the record of correcting that. So, you mentioned roof, which is terrific. One thing, and this might sound like I'm making sport of it. I know that these things go out to bid. Can we get some showerheads in that place that actually work? I know it goes to the lowest bidder, but I frequent the community center and have for years, and I can tell you that if you were to quiz every single person who went through the showers in the locker rooms, that will come up.
Shameless, personal...
Shameless.
Advance.
Shameless.
I believe the item is about...
Pitch to get me a decent showerhead in that place, okay?
Do you have something pertinent to the question, Council Neary?
I know. I just thought I'd bring that up.
Be happy to look into that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Santos. Thank you very much.
On your own time. Any others? Now, that's a hockey... That's a hockey player for you. Taking a crack and running with it, you know? Council Dagwan?
Yes. Where do you plan to put the... Do the new security improvement, the new office for a police officer, is it?
If when you go into the building from the front entrance, it'll be right on the left. Is that right, Mark? Oh, it's on there. On the right.
It's taking up the space that's already there.
There's a space.
Already there.
What's that?
Deborah, you know it is the multicultural room, the room that is off the multicultural room. There's a closet next to it, so we're able to put in access through the closet without costing as much as it could have if we had to tear down the whole section. And then it goes into... It will go into that office. No one will see them get in. They can take complete control. The SWAT team can come in. Everything can be taken out of that room.
Thank you.
And it was worked with the DPW and the municipal police department to design it.
Mark's got the laser pointer up on this screen. You can see.
Thank you. That was our Director of Rec and Leisure Services. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll flip it back to the clerk for a vote.
Councilors, Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yep.
Beeden Bender?
Yep.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
11 yes.
Thank you. Council Hebert, one more, please, 219-116.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, a public hearing, opening, and a roll call. Item number 2019-116, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $415,000 for the purpose of funding the Craigville Bath House and Parking Lot Improvement Project as outlined in fiscal year 2020-fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan.
I have a first and a second, please. Yes. Yes, I do. Thank you very much. All those in favor of going to a public hearing on 2019-116, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none, we're in the public process, and please, could we have a rationale, public hearing?
This appropriation order combines projects CSD 20-1 and CSD 20-5 that are found on pages 103 to 106 in the CIP book. This project will complete improvements to the Craigville Bath House that were begun in 2016. At that time, the DPW completed the maximum value of work that was allowed under existing building codes without having to comply with new velocity zone requirements that would have elevated the structure 13 feet above the beach. As the town council and residents at the time had little appetite for that result, the project was broken into parts. This appropriation will complete the rehabilitation of the interior and exterior of the bath house to include expansion of the first aid area, relocation of the office area to the first floor, structural improvements, staff area improvements, and improvements to staff access to the beach. The pavement surface at the Craigville Beach parking lot has deteriorated to the point where additional failure will result in having to undertake a complete reconstruction. There are innumerable cracks, fissures, holes, and upheavals. This project will provide a level and overlay of pavement and parking space striping, which will result in a better and safer experience for beach visitors and staff, as well as maximizing parking spaces at the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the rationale. We're in the public hearing process. Would anybody like to come forward on 2019-116 and be heard? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion. I have a first, second, please. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on 2019-116, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any opposed? Nope. All set? Okay. We have closed the public hearing, and we're looking for council questions. Council... I got it jumping all over me here. Council Schnep, why don't you start it? Thank you.
Again, I'm just connecting the appropriation we made last year for Craigville Bath House improvements of $315,000. Is this an additional amount to complete the project?
Yes, this is for different work.
Different work?
Yeah.
Okay. And the other hasn't commenced yet, or is it in process?
It's in design.
It's in design right now. So, we'll get that going, probably in the fall, after the beach season.
Council Rap Grissette?
Okay. I can't help but see that Loop Beach Bath House is slated for further renovation in 2021. Is this appropriation for 255? Am I reading this right, on 2019-116, 103 of our book?
Yes.
Okay. So, is any portion of the 255 for design for Loop Beach?
No.
Okay. None at all.
That's the entire... Oftentimes, this is a beach house improvements CIP, so we list what the future improvements or locations will be as well.
Okay.
But in this fiscal year 20, it is exclusively for Craigville.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Beeden Bender?
Thank you. So, I'm... It's possible I'm confused at this point of the night, but I thought Vineyard Wind was covering the Craigville... Oh, it's the Colville's. Okay, thank you. I am confused.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd turn it over to the clerk for a vote.
Councilors, Wallace?
Yes.
Beeden Bender?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
With gratitude, yes.
Levek?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Tinsley?
Yes.
11 yes.
Thank you very much. We certainly could attest to the stamina of our pickleball players if we kept them to this point, but since we've completed that one, I'm gonna jump over that. I'd ask Council Schnep to assist us, please, on 219-118.
This is all business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call vote. Appropriation number 2019-118, appropriation transfer and loan order in the amount of $446,000 for the purpose of funding the Hyannis Golf Course Kart Path System Replacement Project as outlined in fiscal year 2020-fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan.
I have a first and a second to open the public hearing on 2019-118. Please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we're in the public hearing, and I'd ask for the rationale. Good evening, Mr. Director of Golf.
Bruce McIntyre with me now. The Hyannis Golf Course is 43 years old. All major features and components are well beyond their anticipated useful life. Course components continue to deteriorate after more than 40 years of heavy use and frequent neglect by previous owners. This multi-year project will refurbish and modernize the Hyannis Golf Course. The overall project will replace the entire irrigation system, renovate sand bunkers, construct forward tees, refurbish existing cart paths, and construct new paths where none currently exist. It will also widen fairways through selective tree removal. This particular project represents phase one and will concentrate on the cart paths. Cart paths are riddled with potholes, crumbling asphalt, and washouts, which on a hilly course such as Hyannis are a significant safety concern. Improvements to the course will enhance the existing customer base's golfing experience as well as attract new customers. This action will be a contributing factor in generating additional revenue to help fund future facility improvements. Thank you.
Thank you for that rationale. We're in the public process, or the public hearing, of 2019-118. Anybody want to speak to the public? From the public, want to speak to this issue, please? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion. I have a first and a second. Thank you very much. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for 2019-118, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Councilors, questions, please? Yes, Council Rap Grissette?
What are you gonna replace the paths with? Are you gonna use asphalt again?
Yes, we are. The nature of Hyannis Golf Course being so hilly, erosion is a huge problem. The soil is...
is very rocky, um, we've experimented with a number of different, um, non-asphalt sources just as stopgaps as time has gone on with very little success, a good rainstorm and everything's at the bottom of the hill.
Okay, all right.
Just so you, this, this isn't a continuous path, so you're not gonna look at a highway all the way around.
I realize that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none? Yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor Wallace.
I have a question and, and also a statement. First of all, I'll make the statement. The courses look great, the grass is fantastic this season, and as early as we are into the season, I think you and your crew and staff needs to be pretty pleased with the way things are shaping up thus far. Well, with that being said, now, with the, with the paths, are these, is this, are we just gonna add a new layer of asphalt onto the existing thing, or are these actually completely taken out and a new substrate put in and two layers of asphalt on top of that?
You're, you're looking at, in some places, the paths are better than others, so obviously we would, we would address them a little differently. With what you're seeing, they would be completely removed, we'd be regrading with base and top coat, we'd be going from a six-foot wide path to an eight-foot wide path.
Thank, thank you.
Counselor Leveque.
How's it going on the repair of the, the heating system and the remediation of the, when the water leak happened?
Um, contracts are signed, sealed, deliver, and the work is being scheduled as we speak. And, and I'd like to just say that, um, a, a big thank you to DPW administration, specifically Mark Marinaccio for his time and efforts. Every time we have a little issue at Hyannis Golf Course, there's always more than meets the eye.
Yes, I can imagine. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions, oh, Counselor Tinsley.
Just, just throwing one out there, 'cause I, I will admit, ten years ago, I, I probably would've had quite a few more questions, like, I, I don't understand why we need this here, blah, blah, blah. But for those out there who haven't been there or haven't been on a cart like this, it's, it's definitely a safety feature. I've seen carts on their sides, um, I don't usually get a cart, 'cause my wife says if I golf, I have to walk, so, but I think, I, I will just echo Counselor Wallace's comments that, that the place looks great, and, and I think you should be commended, but this is, this is definitely needed, so I'm a definite yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd throw it to the clerk.
Counselors. Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Terrific. Counselor Rap Grissette, please, two thousand nineteen one one nine.
This is old business, public hearing, roll call, two-thirds, general fund capital improvement plan, item twenty nineteen one one nine, appropriation and loan order in the amount of one million seven hundred and thirty thousand for the purpose of funding the channel dredging project as outlined in the fiscal year twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor going in the public hearing in two thousand nineteen one one nine, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? We're in the public hearing, and I'd take a rationale, please.
I'd like to introduce interim Town Engineer Mendez Ruggiero and Director of MEA, Dan Horn, assist me. This project involves the ongoing design permitting and maintenance dredging of town-owned navigational channels. Dredging is required to address shoaling as well as access to and from marinas and recreational and commercial boating locations. The town completed a comprehensive dredge plan in twenty seventeen based on surveyed conditions and historic dredging frequencies. The plan identifies dredge needs in fifteen channels, basins, and embayments during the current five-year CIP cycle. These channels provide important navigational access for significant numbers of recreational and commercial vessels, as well as regulatory and emergency response vessels. The failure to maintain these channels can result in very dangerous conditions which can threaten the safety of our residents and risk serious damage to boats in addition to impairing commercial and recreational activities. The fiscal year twenty program will address the following: the Blish Point Boat Ramp Channel Design and Permitting, the Barnstable Harbor Mid-Entrance Channel Design and Permitting, and Phase Two of dredging at Dead Neck Sampson's Island. Thank you.
Thank you for that rationale. We're in the public hearing for two thousand nineteen one one nine. Any public wish to speak to the issue? Hearing none, I'd take a motion and a second, please, to close the public hearing portion. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, it's a dredging question. Hearing none, I'd throw it to.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Ruined your night.
No, please, Counselor Schnapp.
What, thank you, Mr. President.
No, happy to have you.
What, what's the possibility that we may be the recipients of state funding for one of these dredge projects again?
There is another grant round, and the applications are due on May first, and we are certainly going to be applying for those funds.
And I notice in the source of funding, we're again assigning some of the cost to the Comprehensive Water Management Private Way Fund. Is that based on our belief that this project is contributing to our wastewater, rectification of our wastewater issues?
There is shown to be some benefit from dredging and removing of nitrogen from the embayments, so that's why that's proposed that way.
And I, I think Bond Council had approved that last year? Okay.
Director of Finance, could I ask you just for clarification, please? Mark Mills with us tonight, thank you for hanging in, Mark.
To answer your question, yes, we did get confirmation from them that we can use that fund for that purpose.
Counselor Rap Grissette, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, um, just with the, um, the second phase of Dead Neck, um, well, Sampson's Island, actually, um, which is the western part, Dead Neck's actually where it's being deposited, are the spoils going to Dead Neck in Phase Two, or is any?
Yes.
Any of that gonna be for beach nourishment anywhere?
I, I, I don't believe so. That's all going to the Dead Neck in the Phase Two as well, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I send it to the clerk for a vote, please.
Counselors. Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Leveque.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnapp.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beeden Bender.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Rap Grissette, could I ask you to assist me in two thousand nineteen one twenty, please?
Yes, old business, public hearing, majority vote. This is from the Sandy Neck Enterprise Fund Capital Improvement Plan, item twenty nineteen one two zero, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the design and permitting of the Sandy Neck Gate House and off-road vehicle access trail relocation is outlined in the fiscal year twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Plan as read.
Thank you. I have a first and a second to open the public hearing for two thousand nineteen one twenty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we're in the public hearing, could we have a rationale, please?
This project will provide design and permitting to locate, relocate both the gate house and the off-road vehicle trail. A detailed analysis of the long-term viability of the Sandy Neck Beach Parking Lot and supporting facilities was completed with a grant from Coastal Zone Management in the fall of twenty sixteen. In twenty eighteen, extreme weather events resulted in significant flooding of the Sandy Neck Gate House on two occasions, with significant damage and loss to the facility and its contents. With long-term predictions of worsening weather patterns and events on our coastlines, it is important to relocate vulnerable facilities to more protected locations. The ORV trail relocation is imperative in order to improve the management of traffic flow on and off the ORV beach. It will also improve beach patron safety by reducing response time for emergency personnel, and it will provide an off-trail location for patrons to safely air up and air down their ORV tires. Additionally, the ORV trail needs to be relocated to reduce the vulnerability to endangered species habitat areas, specifically of the eastern spade-foot toad. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing portion. Would anyone from the public love to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion of one twenty. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, two nineteen one twenty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Thank you. Counselors, questions? Counselor Beeden Bender.
So, just, you know, this, this picture always shocks me, but thinking of, you know, where, where, where it is now and where it is going to go, just curious, you know, how that actually lays out on a map? You know, how, how much farther back is it going? How has it been determined that it's a safe distance? Do, based on the flood that you see right here, potential floods down the road, so really, it's just a question about placement and how you got to that decision that that was the right place for it?
Um, yeah, the Sandy Neck Gate House is probably in the lowest and most vulnerable location on the entire property in terms of storm surge, and, um, so we are looking to move the gate house up actually towards the ocean, up onto the primary dune, um, and if we were to relocate the trail as well, this would put it in a central location where we'd actually be at the trailhead and the entrance to the parking lot, and that would not only take it out of the vulnerable location that it's in, but it also would greatly improve being able to manage those two access points.
Follow-up, you all set? All set, Counselor Beeden Bender?
I'm all set, please.
Yes, down the end, please, Counselor Tinsley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question on the relocation of the access roads. Is there going to be a separate entrance and exit? You know, is, you know, for people going out onto the beach in their vehicles and those exiting? 'Cause I know there can be some major bottleneck the way it is right now, is that being addressed?
Yeah, there, there definitely is major bottleneck in that location. A big part of that problem is the airing up and airing down. So, right now, we have an on and off, and within that on and off trail is the air up and air down, so it really becomes one, um, one way, and so staff has to sit there and direct people so that, um, so that nobody gets injured, essentially. So, this proposed trail would have pull-offs, and the, and folks would be airing on, uh, up and down off of the trail, thus allowing traffic to run more smoothly.
Any other questions? Hearing none, this is our vote. Uh, we're looking for a majority vote here. All those in favor of two thousand nineteen one twenty as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Please record as unanimous, and thank you, Dan Horn and staff, for hanging with us tonight. Counselor Wallace, I have you for two thousand nineteen one twenty-one, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Old business, open for a public hearing. Uh, it's item number twenty nineteen dash one twenty-one, the General Fund Capital Improvement Plan, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of three million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the public roads maintenance project as outlined in the fiscal year twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-four Capital Improvement Plan, uh, and also, it's a roll call vote, two-thirds required, as written.
Thank you very much. We're trying to open the public hearing for two thousand nineteen one twenty-one. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? We're in the public hearing, and I'll take a rationale, please.
This request is for three point four five million dollars from Capital Trust Fund Reserves for Public Roads Maintenance. The condition of the town's road system of more than seven hundred roads totaling two hundred and sixty miles is deteriorating each year. Adequate maintenance and reconstruction where necessary is essential to preserve this major capital asset. Analysis, which is performed through the pavement management program, shows a significant backlog of needed public road repairs. In addition to the, the town has a backlog of approximately two hundred and fifty locations where drainage improvements are required to protect public safety and prevent potential property damage. Recurring intense storms over the past two years have highlighted additional areas requiring storm drain attention. This program is designed to combat the progressive deterioration of the town's roadway assets and provide stormwater management system construction and repairs. As you can see in the slides, depending on physical conditions and ana, and analysis utilizing the town's pavement management program, the repairs may include one of several different approaches, including full-depth reconstruction, asphalt overlay, milling and paving, applying a chip seal surface, or crack sealing. In addition to surface repairs, improvement projects typically include installation or upgrading of drainage systems, curbing, and sidewalks wherever practicable. Other program elements include traffic calming, ADA accessibility, engineering, permitting, design inspection, and materials testing. The final slide exemplifies the adage famously penned by Benjamin Franklin in the eighteenth century that "an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." The graph illustrates that road deterioration occurs very rapidly between ten and fifteen years of road life. If we can take preventive measures before that point of rapid deterioration, our costs will be a fraction of the cost of full reconstruction. So effectively, we're able to provide a higher condition of roadway at a lower cost. Upon completion of the fiscal nineteen program, we will have undertaken the following: reclaimed one road, milled and paved twelve roads, overlaid four roads, and installed twenty-six drainage systems. In FY twenty, we proposed road rehabilitation work, including milling and/or repaving of Lewis Pond Road, Kattuut, Moon Penny Lane, Centerville, Papaneset Road, and Edwards Road, Hyannis, Parkway Place and Squaw Island Road in Hyannis, and Main Street and Marston's Mills. Major drainage improvements are planned for Ju, Juniper Road in Centerville and Bridge Street, Oak Ridge Road and Oldham Road in Osterville. Other roads may be substituted if necessary due to accelerated deterioration rates, unexpected damages, opportunities to address certain roads with other funding, or other factors. Smaller drainage projects, chip sealing, crack sealing, and preventive maintenance are also planned for various roads townwide to extend their service life. Thank you.
Thank you for that rationale. We're in a public hearing for two thousand nineteen one twenty-one. Anyone from the public wish to come forward? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing portion, please. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for two thousand nineteen one twenty-one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing none. Counselors, Counselor Rap Grissette.
So, thirteen years, we were at three point two, we finally put a couple more hundred thousand in there. I'm glad to see this. Uh, just FYI, Papaneset Road is in Kattuut, not in Hyannis, so, that's what it says in the book here, so, but I know where.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's a Papaneset Road in Hyannis.
Is there?
No, okay.
They would never do that. You can't have Papaneset in Hyannis.
Well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd throw it to the clerk for a vote, please.
Councilors, Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapgrasseti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you. Councilor Wallace, one more, please, 2019-122.
Again, Mr. President, this is old business. We're going to open for a public hearing.
Sure.
It's item number 2019-122. This is the General Fund Capital Improvement Plan appropriation and loan order in the amount of $500,000 for the purpose of funding the public bridge improvements and repairs project as outlined in the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. It's a roll call vote, two-thirds required.
Thank you very much. I have a motion to go into a public hearing on 2019-122. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we're in the public hearing, and I'd ask for the rationale.
The town has recent inspection reports from MAS DOT that identify repairs needed to our many bridges. MAS DOT expects the town to repair deficiencies in a timely manner, and it is the town's responsibility to do so. It is also in the town's best interest to address deficiencies when they are relatively minor before they become safety concerns and potentially much more costly. Maintenance and repairs will be undertaken for the following bridges: Centerville River Bridge, the Maraspen Creek Bridge on Millway and Barnstable, Mill Creek Bridge, Oyster Harbors Bridge, and the Centuate River Bridge, Kattuitt. This work involves specialized maintenance and repairs that DPW Highway Division cannot readily perform, including but not limited to repairing or replacing structural elements, railings, concrete decking and sidewalks, correcting scour at bridge abutments, replacing expansion joints, repairing or replacing railings, et cetera. Postponing this maintenance could result in safety issues, more costly future repairs, and possibly the imposition of weight limitations by the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the rationale. We are in the public hearing for 2019-122. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this issue? Hearing none, councilors, could I get a motion to close the public hearing portion? I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion of 2019-122, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none. Any questions, councilors? Yes.
Does this just include the work on the surface of the bridge, not the?
No, includes all.
Parts of the water?
Includes all aspects of the bridge, yep.
Any follow-up, Councilor Snap, all set? Any other questions? Hearing, oh, Councilor Tinsley, please.
In the project description, it says, "or co-owned with neighboring towns." Are any of these with neighboring towns? And if so, do they pay anything?
The Mill Creek Bridge on Keviny Lane in Comiquid, that is one that we typically have worked with the town of Yarmouth on a funding arrangement. There's also on Old King Road and Kattuitt, there's a grant funding that Mashpee has gotten, and we're participating with Mashpee on that one. So, wherever we do abut another town, we will work with them to share funding.
Hearing no further questions, I'd ask the clerk to pull the roll call.
Councilors, Rapgrasseti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep. Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Eleven, thank you.
Thank you. 2019-123, Councilor Stein Hilber, could you help me with two, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move item 2019-123 to a public hearing, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $125,000 for the purpose of funding the Bursus Way Bike Path Design and Permitting Project as outlined in the fiscal year '20 to '24 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor of heading for a public hearing on 2019-123, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Hearing none, we are in our public hearing, and I'd ask for the rationale.
This appropriation will fund the town's portion to complete the design and permitting of a 12-foot-wide multi-use path with an asphalt surface located between the road edge and adjacent property boundaries on Bursus Way, north of the Route 28 intersection. The majority of the route will include a wide green space between the road and the path. The path will join the soon-to-be-constructed path approach to Route 28 that forms part of the MAS DOT's Bursus Way Route 28 Intersection Improvement Project presently under construction. This path will allow cyclists to avoid riding on the busy, high-speed section of Bursus Way roadway. This path will complete a bike access route to Hyannis, joining the existing path running along Route 132 from Shoot Flying Hill Road to the multi-use path along Bursus Way south of Route 28. The recent construction of the Route 28-Bursus Way intersection project will allow the safe crossing of Route 28. Construction funds of approximately $1.2 million are being provided by MAS DOT in the fiscal year '21 Transportation Improvement Program for this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're in the public hearing. Thank you for that rationale for 2019-123. Do I hear any public that would like to speak? Hearing none, I'd ask the councilors for a motion to close the public hearing portion of 2019-123. I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, or councilors, any questions? Yes, Councilor Rapgrasseti, please.
Okay, this is the area that I have a problem with that goes in front of DPW. I know this is on Bursus Way only.
Yes.
Are you, is the state planning to put a crosswalk where that sidewalk, sidewalk on the north side of Route 28 in front of DPW ends? Are they going to put a crosswalk to bring you over to the, the bike path on the other side, on the south side of Route 28?
I don't believe that's in their plan. No.
The sidewalk just ends, and there's a sign there that says, "Bikes may use the entire way," when we have a bike path right on the other side of the road. It just doesn't make any sense. It really doesn't.
We had, we had asked them to continue that sidewalk all the way to Pitcher's Way, the light at the intersection there, and I believe they didn't have the funding available to do, to continue that, so.
I'm surprised they even just put that in. It just seems the sidewalk to nowhere.
We will continue to, to request that they do that. They do frequently, at the end of the year, have some funds available, and they do do sidewalk work, so hopefully, we'll get them to do that under that, those funds.
Any other questions on 123, please? Yes, Councilor Beedenbender?
Thank you. Just a quickie. When, when do you expect this to be completed? I'm, I'm always thinking of the summer, especially when we have our summer help that comes in, and the bike traffic really tends to, to peak, and I get really worried about the safety of folks, so just curious about the timing of this.
Well, this is the MAS DOT, and they go by the federal fiscal year '21, so that probably wouldn't be until '22, maybe that spring, if, if all goes according to their plan.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to pull the roll call vote.
Councilors, Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
And Rapgrasseti.
Yes.
It's eleven yes.
Thank you, Councilor Stein Hilber, 2019-124.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move item 2019-124 to a public hearing, appropriation and loan order in the amount of $900,000 for the purpose of funding the Bumps River Bridge Repairs Project as outlined in the fiscal year '20 to '24 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
I have a first and a second, please? Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Thank you very much. I have a first and a second to enter the public hearing process for 2019-124. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any abstention? Any opposed? Hearing none, we are in the public hearing, and I'd ask for a rationale, please.
This CIP request is for $900,000 for the repairs to the Bumps River Bridge located on South Main Street, Main Street at the Centerville-Osterville line. Recent inspections by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, as well as inspection and analysis performed by the town's bridge consultant, have identified required maintenance and safety repairs. Completion of these repairs could extend the life of the existing bridge by as much as 25 years. Construction of a new bridge could cost as much as $10 million. The repairs include pile jacketing, deck improvements, waterproofing, guardrail, and road surface replacement. Failure to implement the recommended maintenance will require, will result in further deterioration, necessitating more expensive repairs, and the potential reduction of its weight rating, which could impede travel by large trucks, fire apparatus, and school buses. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that rationale. Anyone want to speak from the public on 2019-124? Hearing none, I'd ask the councilors if you'd like to leave the public hearing portion and close it. I have a first and a second to close the public hearing portion of 2019-124. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Councilors, any questions on the bridge over Bumps River? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to take the roll call vote, please.
Councilors, Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapgrasseti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you very much. I'd ask Councilor Beedenbender to help me for two, 2019-125, page 39, please.
Thank you, President Crocker. This is old business, public hearing, roll call vote. This is item number 2019-125, General Fund Capital Improvement Plan for the appropriation and loan order in the amount of $314,000 for the purpose of funding the sidewalk overlay and guardrail project as outlined in the fiscal year '2020, fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you. We have a motion to go into the public hearing portion of 2019-125 as written. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, I would ask for the rationale in the public hearing portion.
The town has more than 80 miles of sidewalks and over nine miles of guardrail along its public roads. Many sidewalks are narrowing, cracked, root and frost-heaved, and deteriorating, which are significant safety concerns. Much of our guardrail does not meet current safety standards and consists of concrete posts connected with steel cables, which are deteriorated beyond use. For many years, the town council has funded an annual program of repair and placement in order to keep our roads and sidewalks safe for all users. Under this program, in fiscal year '20, we won't be doing any sidewalk repair. However, we do plan to replace approximately 3,000 linear feet of guardrail along the service road in Centerville between Old Stage Road and Oak Street. The presence of high-pressure natural gas transmission lines in the area requires much of this excavation work to be completed by hand, hence the cost in this particular area. And this will complete the service road guardrail work.
Thank you for that rationale. We're in a public hearing for 2019-125. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, I'd take a motion, a first and a second, to close the public hearing portion. And a second? Thank you, I have both. All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion of 2019-125, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, councilors, any questions, please? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to take the roll call, please.
Councilors, Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Beedenbender.
Yes.
Crocker.
Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Rapgrasseti.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Councilor Beedenbender, could you help me for 2019-126, please?
Yes, thank you. This is old business, public hearing, majority vote. Item number 2019-126, General Fund Capital Improvement Plan. This is appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $114,000 for the purpose of funding the Main Street Hyannis Tree Lighting Project as outlined in the fiscal year 2020 dash fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you. Do I have a first and a second, please? Do I have a first and a second? I have it, thank you very much. All those in favor of moving 2019-126 to a public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none, we're in the public process, please, rationale.
This project will fund the design and installation of tree lighting on Main Street in the village of Hyannis. The project will include removal of existing failed lights, repair and installation of electrical connections, and installation of new commercial lighting on 25 existing trees. Many of the tree lights on Main Street have failed due to the light style, water infiltration, and vandalism. Some of the light connections were made to private businesses, allowing some light groups to be off while others remained on. Some of the lighting strings are no longer working. This project will correct these conditions with the installation of commercial lighting connected to municipally-controlled electrical connections. The lighting will be designed in such a way as to minimize the potential for vandalism. Thank you.
Thank you. We just had the rationale. We're in a public hearing for 2019-126. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to us? Hearing none, I'll take a first and a second on the closing of the public hearing portion. I, I got the first and the second, thank you very much. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for 2019-126, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Councilors, any questions? Yes, Councilor Rapgrasseti.
Dan, from where to where?
I don't, I don't know that I have the exact look. They've identified trees where they've had lights in the path, and it's mostly in the center, you know, from Old Colony, I'm not Old Colony, Barnstable Road, yes, in that kind of center section of Main Street. We've worked, this has been driven, and we've worked with the Business Improvement District to identify these trees, and they've really helped us to understand where they best prefer to have this lighting.
And they have put how much into lighting of the trees? I know they did a fundraiser to, to, to do this initially.
Recently, or?
I thought they did, I don't know.
They had done some work in the past, and they had had their electrician do some work, and that was, some of that failed. They've recently done, I think, a fundraising to wrap the trees with, with lighting, but not, this isn't up in the, up in the canopy. Wrap the poles, not the trees, I'm sorry, along Main Street as part of their long table celebration that they're going to have this summer.
I, I won't support this item. I'd rather spend the money on planting trees than putting lights on them, so.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yes, Councilor Beedenbender?
I actually, I will support this for the reason that one of the, so I, I, one of the issues with Main Street is that it gets so dark at night, and, and there's a couple issues that are attendant to that. One is that it's off-putting to people who want to walk down Main Street and go into businesses. It doesn't look very welcoming or inviting. So, so one, one part of it, it's an attraction piece, but the other part of it is that when Main Street goes dark, it tends to invite activity that we don't necessarily want on Main Street. So, activating that area helps to sort of uplift it, if you will. So, I'm really pleased to actually see this happening. It's, it's something that we've talked about in some committees, so I, I'm for this project.
Any other counsel comment? Councilor Hebert?
So, I'm kind of following up on the concept of, of planting more trees. When we put these wires around the trees, if we don't periodically take the wiring off and then, you know, kind of rewrap the tree, are we hurting the, the health of these individual trees on Main Street in Hyannis?
Well, I, the way that they are currently installed, we're not, was not professionally done. Quotes that we've gotten so far are from professional companies that would come and maintain that system for a number of years. So, what I'm going to say is, in the future, yes, that would, it basically would, it would take care of any tree growth.
But, but right now, it's most probably not healthy for the trees the way it's done.
Probably.
So, this expenditure would, would carry us for the next, how many years, you think?
The proposal included work, basically three years' worth of continued.
At least three years.
Care for, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Yes, Councilor Dagwan.
Just a comment.
I feel that this is a great addition. I'm glad that the town has taken it up. When you go to many other villages, their main street, main streets are lit up during the holiday season and throughout the year. And Hyannis's main street is not very attractive. And at times, it doesn't feel as safe. And I think to bring more light down there, will draw more people to feel free to walk along the main street. I think it'll be a great improvement for the vendors, people who own businesses on Main Street. They're all in support of this, and I think it's a great idea to kind of make us look as, we are the hub. And so coming to our main street anytime, particularly in the evening, it should look viable and safe. I think this will help.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Yes, the town manager would like to be recognized from the other side. Thank you.
Good evening, Markell's Town Manager. Thank you. The bid has committed, they have been working with us relative to what exists out there now. And we've communicated that it being the town of Barnstable's Main Street, for any sort of capital improvements, we should certainly be the ones overseeing that. And therefore, I appreciate the Department of Public Source Assistance. The bid has committed, and the order's been written so we can accept gifts, as all are, and they've committed $10,000 to the project. Planning and Development and I are also pursuing grants that we believe exist and could probably bring that amount or slightly more in toward the project, and we anticipate trying to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. I'd call the vote on 2019-126. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposition? One, please record. Council Rap Grissette? Am I correct, Council Rap Grissette? Yes, please record, Council Rap Grissette. Any abstentions? I hear none. All right. Please acknowledge that as passed. I am looking for Council Leveque to assist me, please, on 119-127. 219-127.
This is old, thank you, Mr. President. This is old business public hearing, majority vote. This is item number 2019-127, General Fund Capital Improvement Plan, Appropriation Transfer, Transfer Order in the amount of $150,000 for the purpose of funding the municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4 program as outlined in the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Plan as written.
Do I have a motion and a second? I do. Thank you. For 2019-127 to enter into a public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. I'd look for the rationale, please.
Thank you. MS4 is the acronym for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. It is a permit that is granted by the U.S. EPA under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or NEPTES, as it's known, in compliance with the Clean Water Act. In Massachusetts, the permit program is administered by the Department of Environmental Protection. This is a program that is mandated by the EPA, and the town must comply by law. An MS4 is a system that is owned by a state, city, town, or other public entity that collects and conveys storm water that discharges to surface waters. Systems include storm drains, pipes, ditches, swales, et cetera. To prevent harmful pollutants from being washed or dumped into water bodies from an MS4, the EPA requires that the town obtain a NEPTES permit and develop a stormwater management program. This project is intended to continue to help bring the town of Barnstable to compliance with the MS4 program. The original CIP, 2016-104, has been used for the following: Preparing and submitting a notice of intent, including endangered species and historic preservation documentation; updating the town's stormwater management program plan to incorporate the requirements of and the town's approach to meeting the final permit; preparing and submitting an illicit discharge detection and elimination plan; investigations and surveys to collect additional information on stormwater infrastructure as required; and finally delineating and prioritizing outfall catchments. The FY 2020 through 2024 CIP will include the following: Updating the storm system mapping; preparing or, and/or updating stormwater pollution prevention plans for select town facilities; preparing spill prevention control and countermeasure plans; assisting in the development of ordinances and regulations to address stormwater on new or redeveloped sites; develop operation and maintenance plans for stormwater installation in facilities; assist in outfall sampling, screening, and inspections; and public education and outreach. Thank you.
Thank you for that rationale. We are open and in the public hearing for 2019-127. Would there anyone from the public would like to speak to this issue? Hearing none. I would take a motion to close the public hearing portion of 2019-122, 127. I have a first and a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing portion of 2019-127, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Councilors, any questions? Yes, Council Snap.
Not a question, but just a request that at some future council meeting that perhaps we could have a short public education segment, because I think this is a real important thing for our community to know what they can do to help in the MS4.
I'm happy to do that at your.
Certainly, happy to do it as well. I believe, I believe just as Council Snap does, the importance of it. Any other questions? Hearing none.